We'll ask our chaplain, Commissioner Coleman, to lead us in our prayer, and Commissioner Solomon to read some pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with a big present. We've got a phone call tonight. We pray that all things that are done here tonight will be in decent, genuine order, that we'll be kind of peaceful, even this evening, that we may be able to discuss and make decisions on behalf of the people. We thank you both once again for bringing us here. We know God, that you could have brought us here for this meeting tonight. We just pray for blessings upon each and every one that's attended. Bless our community, bless our state, bless our nation, in Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I think the public plan.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, to the good time of which it is. Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One quick announcement for Commissioners at Dutton. Uh, one of our former Commissioners, GNS Leader, has passed away, and arrangements will be forthcoming on that, so just wanted to let you know if you have any further questions. So first item is approval of corrections of the agenda. Mr. Scarlett.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to suspend the rules. And there's a couple of things. We have a more late resolution on the consolidated retirement system. We need to add, just making the language fit with what they tell us because we change the language. Legacy to.
Higher.
Okay, and so we've got to change a little language here.
So we have a second. No, go ahead.
Go ahead. And then there's a thing for the sheriff. I'd like to suspend the rules.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to add to the, and I might add to the agenda as well. That's okay, do the same vote.
I accept. If it's a second. You want a second?
Yes, second.
So we have a motion second, to suspend the rules and add three items. Separation. It'll take a three-fourth vote, County Commission, need discussion. Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to talk about battery electric storage systems, and if there are no objections, and I have a motion to offer, and I'd like to move it to the top of new business if there's no objections.
New business. Okay, that's fine.
Yes, sir, both the ones. And I'll, the, the motion I'm making for, uh, the sheriff's deal has to include suspending the rules to go to the election committee also.
I want to make a motion as well, that we move the, uh, resolution 2023-16 up to right after the, um, appearance of citizens.
Now, I've got to deal with this other person, so he wanted to move it to new business, unless you're okay with that.
Well, I'd rather, I'd better make my motion before we get into that resolution.
Okay.
But, but, I mean.
It's a pleasure, the body. We've got one member wants to move it to new business, we want to do it by our citizens' conference.
We got to handle suspension of rules first.
That's correct. So we have a motion second to suspend the rules. It'll take three-fourth votes to suspend the rules. Commissioner Brooks, small speech.
I had a question for Mr. Dockry. Can you not make your motion when we discuss resolution 2023-16?
It's a completely di- different motion and not really, that doesn't pertain to the resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
So right now you're voting to suspend the rules, and then you'll have to vote on what items to add?
Yes.
So, we have a motion second, we've had discussion, it'll take fourteen votes to suspend the rules, to add these items, so if you would go ahead, if you're in favor of suspending the rules, vote yes. You're opposed, vote no. All right, so now, we have a motion, once we get this cleared.
Uh, Mayor.
Sir.
As far as the, for it's had on the agenda, I think Commissioner Norton's got a good point, I think her opinion is, to do this after the, the public input, because there's probably a lot of interest, would there be any objections to let me go first with mine, and then do the resolution next, and both of those right after public input?
Right after the body, say that a motion.
Yes.
Is there a second? There is a second discussion. Let's move the resolution to right after appearance of citizens. If Mr. Dockry has a motion, resolution, amendment, what do you have? A not, a motion, far too late?
Yes.
He's got a motion.
Yes.
Okay. Motion second, full assumption of discussion. All favor vote yes, opposed vote no. It passes, it's nineteen to two. So that item has been moved on the agenda. Mr. Scarlett has items, you have a motion to add.
Did that motion include Mr. DeJennet's?
Yes, it did.
I have two items. One is a discussion of, the sheriff does not have overtime in his budget. He has comp time. We have a serious issue with liability on comp time, uh, and I'd like to try to address that. And it's about to put in overtime, and I made a fur, Mr. Paul, because he can explain a lot better than I can, when we get there. And then the second thing is a resolution, and it is, it's in your packet, and it is on the agenda already, if we suspend the rules for the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. It's under the justice stuff. But I'd like to make sure both of those are added to the agenda, and I don't really care where you put them. It's up to you.
Okay. So we have a motion. I'm going to leave a second. I have a second motion second, full assumption of discussion, and Sheriff's Department amendment in his budget, and what the Finance Director. Mr. Brooks.
Mr. Scarlett, did you say it's already on the agenda? Can you turn which one it is?
Under the Finance Department, the consolidated thing is the lifestyle item under the Finance Department. And it should say on there, if suspend rules suspended.
Oh, okay. Five. Okay. No other requests to speak? All favor vote yes, opposed vote no. Passes, not everyone wanted to stand. So our agenda has been corrected. First item for approval is approval of minutes. You have your regular quarterly session for the meeting on April the seventeenth, you have the County Bear Board on April the seventeenth, and the special card session for June the twenty-sixth. We have a motion and a second to approve these amendments, or in corrections, anyone that wishes to speak. Seeing none, I'm in favor of approving the minutes as presented. Vote yes, opposed vote no. Minutes are, minutes are passed, point one zero. All right, citizens' comments. Just prior to this, I've been asked to let the zoning officer give a quick explanation as to what has been voted on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, uh, this resolution, if, for those who don't understand it on the Commission, is a resolution for our site plan requirements, which we already have site plan requirements, but when these folks came in last year, um, of course, we never had anything like this in the county. And so I put them, uh, in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals in November, for them to, uh, rule what zone it should be appropriate for this. And I know some, some of you asked, you know, why we put it in A1. Well, that was up to the Board of Zoning Appeals. I mean, they, they looked at it and they deemed it should be in the board, so that ship sailed. Now, these site plans went to the Planning Commission, um, I think February, and we've worked on them since then, through the three cities. A couple of the cities, they're like all of us, it's, it was hard to understand for a while, so right behind Jeff City, we had to go twice for them to understand the whole thing, and, and the people from Best showed up, and all three cities unanimously voted for it to send it to you all. Um, we, of course, like I said, we didn't have any regs, and these, they helped John Neal and the Planning Commission, Mr. Brooks wasn't known at then, Paul was, and they worked on it for several months, and come up with these, uh, regs, and so, I mean, if there's any other questions about it, for me, I'll answer them at this time. If that's all right.
The resolution is concerning regulations in the zone, correct?
Right, it changes our zoning.
Yes or no on whether this company comes in?
Yeah, it is for the whole county, it's not just for Piedmont. It, this is for the whole county. If they come to Piedmont, then that's up to the Planning Commission, or they have, well they have to come back to the Planning Commission and get a site plan approved by the Planning Commission. Now, they can say yes or no, but they, they've got to go with these regs. If we don't pass these regs, then they're going to put it in with very little regulations that we got now. Um, it, I mean, that's still up to the Planning Commission to do that, but it's a lot better if we have these. So, any questions?
When we get to the resolution part, if you have pushed, I just want to get the general public to, to understand what's going on. David Seale, and, you know, we appreciate bravery, I know you get three minutes, we, we've got all the bravery we can get, we, we want to hear from all of you, but I don't know whether, so, sorry, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Chairman, you always do a good job entertaining us before the meeting, we're always pushing. I'm sending you documentation, uh, by the David Seale, seven thirty, same one, I'm sending you documentation on my comments, and I urge you to review them, there's now different documents I'm going to send.
Resolution oh seven in January recommending the General Assembly enact laws to protect their children from gender reassignment surgery and drug therapy. Their legislature and twenty-six other states have now made laws to stop the practice of butchering reproductive organs of children and prescribing hormone therapy, and I commend you for making that resolution. The Biden administration views this much differently. When the states enacted protections, President Biden blew a gasket and went to Plan B, making and signing executive orders affecting three federal agencies that will directly impact Jefferson County and its school system. The aim of the Biden administration is to force transgender ideology on our students. The documents that I am sending you will demonstrate this. The administration is expected to accomplish its goals in part through grant funding. Here's County Commission's role. You have oversight authority over the school system budget amendments. As grant money comes in, you need to scrutinize and reject any state or federal grant funding that advances transgender ideology to our students. The Centers for Disease Control rebranded the word resilient. Its transgender youth page demonstrates this. Thus, the name applied to the resilient school communities grant that Jefferson County Schools received last year for so-called mental health. As The Federalist reported earlier this year, children and their parents get the idea of gender transition at school and from psychologists. They call this the school-to-scaple pipeline. You have a responsibility to filter out any federal or state grant funding that jeopardizes our students.
Thanks, sir. Stephanie Poor.
Thank you, if you could give us your name and address, you have three minutes. Absolutely. My name is Stephanie Poor, I live at twenty-two twenty-five Piedmont Road in New Market. I'm a seventeen-year resident of Jefferson County. I come before you today to voice my concerns that myself and other residents have on Dumplin Valley Storage Facility. We understand the need for renewable energy resources in our area, but we don't believe lithium-ion batteries are the answer. There are too many unknown problems and answers for this new technology and its long-term effects. There are twenty-five thousand incidences of fire overheating in lithium-ion batteries over the recent five-year period, according to the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission. With large-scale lithium-ion battery energy storage systems, there have been known forty fires in recent years, according to the research from Newcastle University. Lithium-ion batteries are subject to thermal runaway, releasing toxic gases into the air, which, when heated, generated malfunction, energy cell and module causes to fail, potentially generating intense fires that reignite after being extinguished. Very, various highly publicized incidents have illustrated fire safety concerns associated with the lithium batteries. Lithium reacts with water to create a flammable gas, pouring water on lithium fire is often counterproductive and very, very dangerous. In the instance of a leaking lithium battery, exposure to air and moisture can produce even hydrofluoric acid, which is highly toxic, and can severely irritate eyes and lungs. Furthermore, lithium floats in water due to its low density, so smothering or submerging a lithium fire can be more dangerous, causing runoff into our water and creeks and farmland. We have three schools within a five-mile radius downwind from this proposed facility, putting our children at an unnecessary risk. Our local fire department is not equipped to handle this kind of situation, most fire departments are not, due to the newness of the technology, so it has become a learn-as-you-go experience, as seen with Tesla car fires taking up to two hours and over six thousand gallons of water to put out, or the Arizona Energy Storage Facility where four career firefighters with specialized hazmat training were severely injured in an explosion. This proposal for Dumplin Valley is to put a six-million battery, two-hundred pod in our community. That's just irresponsible. These batteries only last for approximately fifteen to twenty years at best, and will have to be maintained, disposed of, and/or replaced, and at what cost? We need to explore, unused other options, until there's tested alternatives, like the ion-air battery being made in a West Virginia facility that's non-toxic and ten times cheaper, and can be put out in a fire. Let's please take a step back and not jump on the first offer, and let's work together to get a solution that helps and not hurt our community. Please vote to postpone this and take into consideration our safety.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, uh, Janette. J.I.N.N.E.T.T.E. All right. Hey, I'll make a deal with you, if you applaud at the end of everybody, we'll, we'll call it even. It's okay, I, go right ahead.
All right, thank you. Uh, my name's Michelle Janette, and I live off Wells Springs Road in Dandridge. I want to thank you all for being willing to step up and be representatives to your fellow neighbors in Jefferson County. I know it's not always an easy job. I love that we live in the most unique form of government in the world. We are a constitutional republic, not a democracy. We can boast of having the longest-standing constitution in history, two-hundred-and-thirty-something years, whereas most last seventeen years. Part of the reason for the Constitution's enduring strength is that it is the complement of the Declaration of Independence. The Declaration provided the philosophical basis for a government that exercises legitimate power by the consent of the governed. These conditions for the rights and liberties of a free people come from our Creator. The consent of the governed describes a situation where the people are the self-governing in their communities, religions, and social institutions, and to, into which the government may intrude only with the people's consent. So, in short, your job as elected officials is to listen to the instructions given by the residents of Jefferson County, because it is only with our informed consent that you should govern. The problem with this battery storage facility is very few people were even informed that you were voting to bring it into our county. The people most affected by the dangers presented by these batteries were not even informed that it would be near their properties. So, we're here now, and we do not want to give our consent to this potential health hazard to be placed near us. We would prefer that this facility not be here at all, but should it stay, we ask you all to insist that proper safety precautions be absolutely mandatory if this facility is to move forward. The people spoke up about it last week and gave many examples, and I'm sure will tonight also, about the history of fires and explosions. It's up to you all to insist on the proper regulations. Again, I just want to remind you, because any political powers not derived from the informed consent of the governed are by the laws of nature unjust and unconstitutional. I will close with a quote from Benjamin Franklin. "In free governments, the rulers are the servants, and the people their superiors and sovereigns." Thank you.
Thank you so much. Doug Ibbotson. And when Doug gets down to about one man, it'd be James Nolan, so I'll try to expedite that a little bit.
Yeah, I'm Doug Ibbotson, twenty-five ten Indian Creek Road. Um, I'm, disclaimer first. Uh, I am an elected school board, uh, member, however, I am not here to speak, to give you the sentiments of the school district, or the school board, or my own individual opinions. What I am doing here is I agreed to relay concerns of, uh, concerned citizens who have, uh, students at the Piedmont School, because they are in my area, and the Piedmont School is in the area I'm responsible for. So, I am relaying concerns that I have heard. First of all, the, I, I probably got eight calls over the last two or three days, and I will admit, I have not been terribly involved in this discussion, uh, because of other things kind of on my plate, but these people were not able to appear here tonight, but have very, very real concerns. I might be replowing old ground here, but I told them I would be here and relay their concerns to you. First of all, the main concern of all of them are the fact that they do not feel that presently, from what they've heard, there is adequate fire suppression or fire hydrants for cooling adjacent batteries on the property. They feel that a, uh, project of this size needs that. Secondly, they feel that the fire department here needs training in advance of the installation of this, so that they understand exactly how to deal with it. This is not a criticism of the fire department, it would be kind of like asking a fire department that's in a forest if they know how to put out fires in an urban skyscraper. All right? They need training, they need intensive training, as do the EMT people who may be, um, responding to calls for students who ingest some of the, the fumes. So, training needs to be done, it needs to be done thoroughly, and it needs to be done prior to this, uh, plant going into effect. Thirdly, they are very concerned about the toxic fumes. Now, they say toxic fumes, I know nothing about lithium battery fumes. I presume they are toxic, it'd be like me sticking my head in a, under a, the hood of a tractor or something. Um, nothing good can come out of, of breathing that. So, please, um, let's do a little bit more research, let's make preparations before we put it in. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service to the county.
Thank you. James Nolan. And Chris Mayish will come when he gets down to about thirty seconds to the, that might help. Thank you. Thanks, sir.
James Nolan, seven fourteen McGuire Road, New Market. And my example is this Ford Motor Company in Michigan is putting in a three-point-five-billion-dollar battery plant up there in the town of Marshall, Michigan, and the people are against that also. And right now, a judge has suspended it, where it goes up to vote by the people, by ballot. And I think that needs to happen here in Jefferson County, too. Send the people back to Texas, they're trying to railroad us into this.
Chris Mayish. Did I get that right? Mayish? Sorry, sir. Michelle Light, you'll be next.
Chris Mash, ten eighty-one McGuire Road. I had no intention of speaking here, but it, I'm not a, you know, don't have a speech or anything, but thirty-five-year residents are a Piedmont community, and I don't think it's something we need in our community, with our kids and grandkids and family living there. Uh, you know, it seems that what we've heard is, apparently, it's been voted in, and it's coming no matter what, it's kind of the idea we've been getting, you know, this year supposedly just to set a guideline. And if that's what it's come down to, they need to be adequate water there, or even if we have put water tires in, they need to pay for it, not the people of this community. You know, I feel like we've been backdoored, y'all have just kind of slid this in to us. They should have been brought up months ago when this was brought in. We just heard about it a couple of weeks ago. You know, it's, uh, you know, maybe we need to follow the money and see whose pockets has got lined, because I don't feel like it's come right on like it should have been. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. After Michelle, it'll be Melina Fay Greg Rogers.
Michelle Light Woodbrier. Um, I spoke last week on the subject. Um, at the end, Best had got up here and they talked about, um, the fact that they have many regulations and that, um, you know, they go through all these safety precautions, and there's no thermal runaway in the tests that they've done, um, on these batteries. And I'd just like to, to say that railroads are also heavily regulated by the federal government, and they're not designed to derail, but we know they do. And another one occurred today, hazardous materials are causing issues, we know that happened in East Palestine as well. They said the water was safe, but fish were dying. They said the air was okay, but, uh, people were getting sick. So, I jotted down a few things that the government has said was safe, that we later found out was not safe. Asbestos, this was touted back in the day, you know, put this in your house, put this in your clothes, even oven mitts were made of asbestos. DDT, fluoride, think of all the countless drugs the FDA has approved, and now that they're recalling, uh, and there's all kinds of lawsuits. Cigarettes, they went as far as telling pregnant women they could smoke up to a pack a day. Now, we know they weren't safe. So, batteries are not designed to catch fire, but they do. They can, this is a catastrophe waiting to happen in our community, and no amount of regulation can stop a catastrophe. It may help it a little. When the Gatlinburg fires took place, it was a catastrophe, and no fire department can be, um, prepared for that kind of wildfires. No, no, no fire department can do that. Most likely, we would have to call in severe county and other fire departments to help with something if a wildfire occurred. Um, also, I would like to mention that this was highly contested at the Board of Zoning Appeals and at the Regional Planning Commission. I was at those meetings, and people were not happy about this going in. Uh, so, the fact that the Board of Zoning Appeals approved this, that doesn't mean anything to me. Um, the people largely don't consent, in fact, I've not heard one person come forward saying they consent to this. Uh, maybe it's time that we change, uh, appointing people that are not elected officials. Maybe we should just put all these boards and have only elected officials on the boards, and that way, um, yeah, and that way, we get to reach out to the people that we elected to represent us. Um, the last thing I'd like to say is, do the right thing.
Thank you. After Ms. Rogers, it'll be, uh, Jim Pickering.
Good evening. My name is Melina Greg Rogers. I'm a fifty-three-year veteran of a Piedmont, uh, community, and I have lived there all my life, except for the time.
Hold on one second. I have a commissioner, you want to ask a question, or?
My apologies for interrupting you, I was trying to get his attention. Um, I was curious, did anybody on County Commission get to vote for this? The battery plant? We, we didn't vote this in, and the idea that I think some of you might have is that this is a done deal. This is not a done deal. They don't have a contract with TBA, and we did not vote for this. So I just want to make sure you all know, we did not vote for this.
Where do we get our voices?
You can put your voice in here tonight, but I don't know who's, I don't know who's responsible for this, I don't know how it got put here, but I want to know before tonight's over, and I think Michelle Light might have, was it the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Yeah, wait, hold on.
So I, I'm just, I'm just curious, because we're getting blamed for voting it in, and we didn't. we didn't.
Let's go back to citizens' comments here, and then, and when we have our discussion, Ms. Norton, you'll be first. I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Norton. That's really important to us. As residents of the Piedmont community, we are really, really concerned about this. I, too, have not heard about this until about a week ago. Had no idea this was going to go on in our community. It scares me to death, honestly. And I think it's really unfair that our elected officials have, like I said, backdoored this, and we didn't know anything about it. I feel like that our concerns and our well-being, the well-being of my grandbabies, the well-being of our children, there's no amount of resolution that can be imposed upon TBA if there is a catastrophe. There's no amount of resolution that can protect our grandbabies, because they're going to have cancer. Who knows what might happen? Because from what I understand, the site is on a hill. It is on a hill that is, and that's been kind of hush-hush, because I've been told two or three different sites, but it's on a hill that runs off to two floodplains that has creeks going through them. So, it's really a big concern. It's a big concern about gases for our community. It's a big concern about people that are down the creek from us. That whole area floods, and it floods on a regular basis. And so, you've got people that have wells, it's going to leach into the wells. I don't know enough...I can't speak intelligently. All I can do is voice my concerns, and I appreciate the people who have spoken before me that have done the research and that have, can give you all specifics. All I know is, I just don't think this is fair. I hate that the fact that I've been told by certain personnel that this is a done deal when we weren't even really told about it. We weren't informed about it. There might have been a piece in the paper on the back page. There might have been a little zoning thing that's about this big, put up for however many months. I don't know. I never saw it. I go down through there all the time. It's really close to my house, and like the lady said before me, it's really close to Piedmont Elementary School by the crow flies, and gas does travel in the air pretty easily. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. After Mr. Pickering, John Gunn will be after that. John, if you can. You got Jim down?
Ready?
Go.
Jim Pickering. I live at 855 Plainview Drive in Dandridge. This project, of course, is very controversial. We know that. You heard it last week. We're hearing it tonight from the citizens about safety and environmental problems. We found out last week that several facilities like this caught fire, okay? We've seen videos on TV about Tesla cars catching fire and almost impossible to put out. So, it seems like to me that this resolution, which I guess is better than no resolution, that this resolution has to be studied, researched, and more teeth put in it, okay? On the handout that I gave you, I've got six questions for the commissioners, and then I follow it with five recommended adjustments to the resolution. First one is, what are the odds of Tesla manufacturing 6 million lithium-ion batteries in 200 mega-pack battery-packed containers without any defects? We've all heard that the Titanic goes down and so forth. Number two, what's the...with the potential federal and state tax abatement credits that are likely coming, could the county possibly end up with all the risk and very little tax revenue? Number three, the Plus Power facility installed in Engleton, Texas in October of 19 has two fire hydrants with six- and eight-inch water mains. So, the question there is, why was our site proposed without a fire hydrant? My thought there is that other best facilities should be studied by the planning commission and find out from them the impact on their communities, the pros and the cons. Okay, number four, for this big, critical new facility, it'd be wise for the commissioners to receive professional insight from the county's fire, EMS, sheriff, school, and tax accessory experts to understand their perspectives on this thing. Number five, the developer's going to be invested about $210 million on this project. They're certainly going to want a return on that investment. So, why haven't they revealed their agreement with the TBA regarding the financial terms of purchasing their stored energy, which is, of course, their product? Number five, with this new and unique technology to help educate and reduce some of the mysteries involved with this project, shouldn't training for our EMS and fire departments have been initiated by the developer? That would have helped explain what's going on. Okay, at the bottom, I've got five recommendations. The water hydrant, we beat that up, okay? I think we all understand the concept there. Number two, though, has not really been discussed.
I'm sorry, your time is up. John Gunn. Ms. Loy, you'll be next after this.
Good evening. My name's John Gunn, G-U-N-N. I live at 915 Beaver Creek Road, Strawberry Plains, Tennessee. I want to speak against this thing, the battery plant, because as has been pointed out before me, there are a lot of issues vis-à-vis the safety of it. I think at the very least, putting this amendment to the zoning on hold would at least perhaps give TBA the opportunity to return Mayor Potts' call, which he told us last week they hadn't bothered...have they still not bothered, Mayor, to return your call? Because until we get to TBA, I don't think we're going to find out what their larger plans are. I looked at their website today. They produce about 50% of their electricity by coal-fired plants. They are planning to get rid of all of that. So, you can imagine how many battery storage plants we could end up with in Jefferson County if half the...another half of the energy we produce has to turn green. And as for the money, the tax credits go to for-profit corporations, and then in the euphemistically named Inflation Reduction Act, if you're a not-for-profit like TBA is, you get paid in cash as opposed to a tax credit, because you don't pay tax anyway. So, that's where a lot of this money is going. And finally, since we're in the middle of a long-range planning process, I do think it behooves us as part of that planning to try and find out where future power sources are going to come from in this county. Because without that, I think it's going to be difficult to plan on what size we want to be. Finally, different subject, I...there was a rumor I heard that the Knoxville area rescue mission is coming back before the planning commission, and if they are, I guess they'll have to kind of pretend at least that they're going to do a single-family home zoning. But really, they're kind of a halfway house for people coming out of addiction, getting back into society. So, at some level, it's almost a medical intervention, and I think it should be looked at on that basis rather than single-family homes pretending to be something else. Thank you.
Thank you. After Ms. Loy, Marion, you'll be...Marion Knight, you'll be after Ms. Loy.
I'm Annette Loy. I live at 1258 Beaver Creek Road, Strawberry Plains. I came before this body last week on the issue of a resolution that was presented to you by the Jefferson County Republican Party Executive Committee. This resolution urged you to send to the state authorities, urging them to do nothing to increase the safety of citizens. You, as a commission, voted to pass that resolution by a vote of 18 to 1. That really bothered me a lot, and I told you about it last week. And I told you that I have developed my own resolution, because I, as a citizen, have the right. I'm expressing my First Amendment right to develop my own resolution. I have sent it to the state. My resolution is based on the Ninth Amendment. You have a handy constitution that was passed out to you tonight. I urge you to read the Ninth Amendment. It guarantees me my right to pursue my life without fear, and no other amendment supersedes it, including the Second Amendment. Governor Bill Lee has called a General Assembly into special session on August 21st to deal with these issues. Make your voices heard. Don't allow extremists to control your decision-making on this issue or on any other issue, because there are extremists among us that are seeking to do that. And I plead with you, do not allow your vision of what's right to be flawed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Loy. After Marion, it'll be Mike Kemeter. K-E-M-E-T-E-R. I'm not real good. Did I get that anywhere near correct? Hopefully, you'll know who you are.
Marion Knight, 440 West Main Street in Dandridge. Thank you for last week. You seem to be listening to public input and thinking about the residents of this county. No matter how things go tonight, I appreciate that. It was a wonderful feeling to be heard, especially after zoning appeals ignored our request to deny Bess's an approved A1 use. We had no recourse. They are not elected, so we can't remove them from office. Now, last week, we were told that residents around Gambit Facility in Texas love the facility. Over the weekend, I read Bloomberg and found that Plus Power doesn't own it. They were the developer. They sold it to Tesla, who built it and runs it. The former town manager said it was obvious that they were working for Tesla. He also said that developers often have purchasers waiting in the wings. Why didn't we know this? Now, I want to look at everything I've been told. You have to start asking some tough questions. I gave you my critical revisions to the resolution last week. Resident notification, hydrants, and denying Bess in A1. Tonight, I would like to add compliance with the National Electric Code and the International Fire Code 2021, which was recommended by Chandler, Arizona, where there was a fire. Compliance with ANSI Z535, recommended in New York State's 2023 model law. Compliance with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission rules, recommended by Plus Power's own advisor. What about basic contract law? Shouldn't we include bonds, timeframes, enforcement, and severability? What type of security fence will be acceptable? Chain link? That doesn't seem very secure. After the North Carolina attacks, Plus Power's advisor recommended concrete block walls or sandbags. There's plenty online about firefighting, signage, hazards, explosion concerns, and electricity. You know what's not online? Health studies. No one knows the long-term consequences for humans, wildlife, or natural resources. That's because this technology is too new. We will not know the issues for many years. What price will residents, animals, our water supply, plants, or the earth itself pay? We know that lithium is hazardous when it comes out of the ground, when it's combined with other chemicals, when it catches on fire, when it explodes, and even when its life is over. How can this end well? And what happens if there's an incident? Bess remotely monitored unmanned installations. How long will it take firefighters to get there? If there's no tanker...if there's no hydrant, how many tankers of water will be needed to keep the batteries from exploding or keep wildfires from spreading? And what if an evacuation is necessary? We know how to...
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Ms. Marion, we have a commissioner request you to finish, that you be allowed to finish.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'd only add a couple more sentences, sorry. So, how do we keep wildfires from spreading, and what if an evacuation is necessary? This county did us a great service when they made strict requirements for crypto-mining facilities. It made us an undesirable place for them. Why can't we be just as tough on Bess? Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Kemeter. Am I saying it wrong? Did he give up? 2854 Forest Ridge, Dandridge. Well, it wasn't about batteries, it's road conditions, so we'll...must have got fixed. Okay, Beth Nelson, and after Beth, there'll be Amy Fox.
Beth Nelson, Strawberry Plains. As you know, I continue to advocate and advocate for responsible zoning in this county. I attend almost every BZA meeting, every regional planning meeting, and every county commission meeting. That research that Marion Knight has done should have been done by the Board of Zoning Appeals before this thing ever got out the door. I'd like to have full trust in our county government as decisions are made regarding zoning and about land use. However, as you hear tonight, this is what has been created by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Four members that are not elected, four members have approved placing the best system in an A1 zone as an allowable use. I'm having a hard time with that. The one that was against agreeing to put it in A1, there was one member that voted against it. I would also share with you, I wrote down every note, I have reviewed every meeting. There's 57 reasons to not do this. I'm yet to hear the reasons to do it. I would also like to answer you about who has got us here. Those four members voted after Mr. David...the late Mr. David Williams, who is the planner that was charged with guiding the BZA on decisions. He asked for it to not be approved. He said, "We do not have the appropriate information on this because of safety concerns to approve it." Right after that statement was done, a member of the BZA made a motion to approve it, and it was seconded, and it was done. I'm having a hard time with that. We don't have enough information. At this point, everyone in this room, as far as I can tell, besides the developer who has led the developmental standards to be made, I also sat there and listened to that be done, the safety reasons are severe. The decision by four members, I'm going to say that again, four BZA members that are unelected and appointed members, have put our county, Sevier County, Knox County, Union County, and Hamblin Counties, and probably somebody I've missed in grave danger. There have been multiple cases of these units catching on fire and exploding, and mandatory evacuations harm, harm done to adjacent communities as well as their own, to firefighters and emergency responders. The danger and the safety issues this decision has been placed on our citizens and on Piedmont Elementary School. I cannot believe that there is not something in this resolution about Piedmont Elementary School being right down the road.
Commissioner Coleman has asked for you to continue.
The responsibility for who serves on the BZA and the regional planning rests with this commission. You approve those appointments. Thank you. Thank you.
Amy and Jim will be next.
Yeah, we kind of got at war. This is what people are about to say. Can you just pass those out, please? My name is Amy Fox. I reside on Abilene Trail in Dandridge. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you all tonight. I want to just talk about our road. We have had problems with Ponderosa Road for at least fifteen to sixteen years. The road continues to cave in, and the road superintendent comes out and the road crews fix it. And then it starts caving in, and they're fixing again. It's a repetitive thing that has happened for years, as you can see in those photos. Some of those date back to 2019. We have had an issue in one of those photos. There's in the upper right, it shows a double guardrail. We actually had a vehicle that went over that guardrail in inclement weather because the guardrail was lower than the road because there was nothing to stop it. During rain events, we're having rock coming off of the side of the embankment that they have cleaned out. Residents have stopped and picked up rock out of the road so that we can get through the road and pass safely. The school bus driver has voiced concerns about the safety of that roadway. We have had short-term rentals back there. We have guests of homeowners. We have delivery drivers, all unaware of the situation of the road, causing hazard to other drivers. And again, my husband will speak on this further, but I appreciate everyone for allowing to speak and voice my concerns.
Jim Fox. And Ronald Hunter will be after Mr. Fox.
All right. Well, this is a different path than what everyone else wants to talk about, but still, you know, my name is Jim Fox. I live on Abilene Trail. I want to thank you for the opportunity to let me speak. Again, my wife gave you the pictures and a copy of what I've had to, what I've got to say. Again, I want to talk about the section of Ponderosa Road. There's over a hundred households back in that, back in that area, and this is the only road in and out for one hundred households. If this road collapses, which it has eight or ten times already, we are literally cut off from the world. There is no way for us to get in and out. This is about every two years during the rainy season, the road collapses down the hill, the road department comes by and does the best to patch it up and et cetera. Now, I am not here to bash anybody or put anyone down. I'm sure the road commissioner is a good guy. I'm sure you guys are good guys. What I'm asking, but he has stated repeatedly, he does not have the funding, but it is my understanding, he's never asked for the funding. And I do understand, you know, you do not, the commission does not have control over the road department, but you do fund his budget. So, in a way, you do have control in the funding. I understand that FEMA has been, there were FEMA grants a few years ago for that and other projects. There was an engineering company that offered to oversee the project, to develop the project, oversee the project pro bono for free, and his offer was rejected. I don't know how you get a better deal than that. The majority of safety issues again is, this is the only road in and out for a hundred households. It is, if it completely collapses, we are stranded for the rest of the world. Currently, the road is moving down the hill, and then the bank that they cut on the upper side is falling into the road. So, we're getting it from both ends. It's going down the hill, and then it's debris falling on it. The area is grown up, as you can see in the pictures. There's no lighting at night, so you can't see what's going on. Visibility is limited, so you can't see beyond whether work is being done to see if there's traffic coming the other direction. So, unfortunately, most folks, again, this is the only way in and out, most folks know to look out for and be careful. The patchwork they've done now is starting to become impassable. It's time to stop kicking the can down the road, or in this case, down the hill with our road. What I'm really asking for is help, is for you guys to help me and the road commissioner to help, and all of us get together and find a permanent solution for this road. And one is, I think, one is to get the commissioner to ask for the funding, to approve the funding, and then, secondly, probably the best idea would be to...
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Okay.
Thank you. Ronald Hunter.
The rest I've got to say is in there. Thank you.
Ronald Hunter.
My name is Ronald Hunter. I live at fifteen oh eight David Swan Drive in Dandridge. I've got a couple of things I want to speak of. One about the special session that the governor's called. I'm a pro-second amendment person, and I hope the majority of people are here. I think a lot of special interests, especially the federal special interests, are going to try to ram this red flag law down our throats, and I encourage everybody here to contact their representatives and senators in opposition to any kind of a red flag law, no matter what they call it. About the battery factory, TVA has kind of done this in a backdoor fashion, in my opinion. I know public notice says you put something in the newspaper, but that's not public because I don't read the newspaper, I don't subscribe to the newspaper, unless you subscribe to the newspaper, you're not getting notified. I think there needs to be a better system of notifying the public about things that involve our lives and our families and our health and our welfare. I know from patrol, your background, having worked at refineries and oilfield-related things, that hazmat training is very serious, and it takes equipment, you know, breathing apparatuses and suits and stuff like that. If there's a fire there, the people that are going to have to deal with that fire are going to have to have that equipment, and they're going to have to have that training. I don't think we know what we're getting into. I think we're being sold a bill of goods. I think it's going to raise our electric rates because these people aren't doing this for free. I know they're buying it from TVA to store it, and then they're going to sell it back to them. Well, they're going to do that at the profit, and they're going to be reflected in our energy bills, and I think this is a bad thing. I think coal-fired plants is probably cooling this room right now. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ken Morton. Ken Morton. I got Ken. And Catherine Hunter will be next.
I might not get out of this room alive. I'm Ken Morton, six oh four Boxwood Lane, Jefferson City. Now, speaking for myself, if you have a handout here from me, I'm skipping parts of it in the interest of time. I was a professor at chemistry at Carson Unit for twenty-nine years, PhD in chemistry, and about fifteen publications in peer-reviewed scientific journals on toxicology and carcinogenesis. That doesn't make me an expert on batteries, but there may be a point where I can help you if you have some questions about this stuff, right? Climate change is forcing a shift from fossil fuels to renewables all over the world. Large batteries are being added to power grids from Australia to Alaska. So far, climate change has been minimal in Tennessee, but even TVA is changing. Who would have thought that our country could receive a multimillion-dollar investment in a grid-tied battery system that our county could receive it? It could increase the tax base, create some good-paying jobs, and make our area more resilient against blackouts and other grid errors. As I understand it, your decision tonight is to decide what rules, if any, are going to govern this project, but you don't have all the information that you want or need. That's my understanding of where you're at right now. I'm trying to address that. I think it may be wise to postpone a decision in order to get the information that you want and that you need, but you don't have to reinvent the wheel. The back of this page lists a selection of some city and county governments that have already been where you are right now. It would be a simple matter to contact some of them, and I think some people already have, contact some of them, ask for copies of their rigs, and ask about their experiences with this company or even other companies that have put in these kinds of battery systems. That could take some effort, but it might be worth it. It might even be easier, though, to tap into some nearby experts who are willing to help. The first person I thought of was a guy named Gil Hugh. He's in, he's a director, executive director of Tennessee Solar Energy, let me try it again, Tennessee Solar Energy Information Industry Association. He's in Knoxville. I met him there many years ago when he was hosting an event, and so he's been around here a long time. He was unable to attend today due to a schedule conflict, but he quote said, "He is happy to be a resource to discuss the best practices in zoning, safety, and to answer technical questions." This guy was willing to help you. He also mentioned three other people that I think you might want to know about. Courtney Piper, executive director of the Tennessee Advanced Energy Business Council, representing Tennessee's advanced energy economy.
Dr. Morton, you're...
Golly, okay. Sorry. You got the rest of it. And if you got chemistry questions, I'll try to help.
You'll get out of here alive. Catherine Hunter.
Hi, how are y'all? Some of you probably remember, I spoke here last week on this issue. My name is Catherine Hunter. I live David Swan Lane in Dandridge, Tennessee. Since I was here last week, and I'm going to try to make this go quickly because I know you're going to knock me out of here in just a minute. I gave a lot of thought to this all week, and the one question I kept coming up with, and I'm looking at all of you as I ask it, we hear all the amazing reasons we shouldn't do this, but we don't hear any reasons other than the man who just spoke why we should do it. And what's the rush to do it? Because when you get to the bottom line of all of it, there's only three entities that are really going to benefit from this, and it's all about money, sadly, because our country now worships the almighty dollar instead of the almighty god. Number one, the developer who was sitting here, and I can't remember the name of his company, he seemed like a very nice man, but he's not from Tennessee. He's not from Jefferson County. He doesn't care about this county. He doesn't care about these people. He doesn't care about an accident that might happen. He cares about money for his company. So, number one, we should throw him out as our primary consideration. Number two, TVA profits from this, and truthfully, a long time ago, when they put electricity in here, TVA was wonderful, but they've become, in my opinion, a money-mongering company. I'm sorry. But it's about their bottom line, and they're going to profit from it. And thirdly, the person who's, or the entity who's really going to profit a lot is China because where do you think all those lithium batteries they want to put in here are being made, are all over this country? No one in America is going to profit from this. This county is about faith, family, home, the dirt that we sit on, our kids, but is not about taking a risk this large. There should be no rush because I don't care what political party anybody is, we're all Americans first and foremost. In another year, we're going to have an election, and what's going on right now is nonsense. We are very rich in gas. We are very rich in oil, natural gas, oil, and coal, and when this administration who's pushing this, everything that's going to China is being pushed. When they're out of office next year, we will again have lots of natural gas, oil, coal, and we'll have all we need to power anything. So, why would we risk the life and the livelihood of this county rushing through this crazy battery plant? How many of you have seen the news on television from France when they decided to convert most of their public buses to lithium batteries? And they blew up spontaneously, sometimes with people on them, sometimes not. This is a very risky, maybe twenty years out in the future, it'll make sense, but not now.
After you seek a place, Mr. Blavatsky asks to speak, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. What I'm saying is there is absolutely no reason, and one of the gentlemen here said tonight, and I thought it was kind of glossed over, but somewhere along this line, somebody's getting their pocket lined because this is not good for Jefferson County. I'm not accusing anybody because I don't know anybody personally here that's governing any board of appointed people or anybody else, but this does not make good sense. People like Marion there, who brought us so many reasons. Quite frankly, I'm not here tonight to try to deal with hydrants and all those other things because that assumes this is going to be happening. People here want to assume this is not going to be happening because the people don't want it. And if you take a vote, you might have two or three people here who think it's a good thing, and everybody else doesn't. And all answers are to people out here. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Blavatsky requests to speak.
Yes, sir. I just want to check the status of our livestream for people at home that we work for, too, that can't be here. Apparently, it's not up and running. Is that a usual thing here or...? Because I don't know. It's usually on.
You couldn't get the internet.
Oh, yeah. Okay. He said they couldn't get the internet.
Internet, some issue.
I know, we use it daily, rarely ever problems, but today's been a weird day, folks. I yield, sir.
Paul Hammer, you're next.
Wherever you're at, Paul, I know you're here. Good evening. I'm going to shorten my remarks a little bit because I know it's a long night for everybody. Why do we find ourselves yet again in this difficult situation? As many have stated before me, there is a prime reason. We have nine districts in our zoning resolution. Most begin with a clear statement. The intent of this district is to, only one, agricultural forestry, A-one, does not. It just provides a list of permitted uses. Regional planning has discussed matching the zoning of a parcel to its current land use. It's an interesting idea, but it puts the cart before the horse. Shouldn't we define A-one first and then decide what land uses should be allowed? It's encouraging to see the long-range planning effort underway. At stakeholder meetings, a recurring sentiment has been the importance of agriculture and the need to preserve the rural nature of our county. Is that not motivation enough to make fixing A-one a top priority? Clearly, there are moving, many moving parts to all of this, but we have to start somewhere. I respectfully suggest the following three steps. One, until A-one is clearly defined, add no land uses or variances to this district. Two, regional planning and long-range planning, conduct a joint workshop. First item of new business, provide a clear definition for A-one, then review the other eight zoning districts. And three, with clear definitions in hand, place existing and future land uses in the proper zoning district. Taking these logical steps now will prepare a smoother roadbed for implementation of a long-range plan in whatever form it takes. These are challenging times that require leadership and courage, but as NASA Flag Director Gene Krantz said during the Apollo thirteen mission, failure is not an option. Thank you.
David Nelson.
Paul Hammer, that's David Nelson.
That's correct. You are correct. And I said that, too, didn't I? Sorry, Paul.
My name's Paul Hammer. I live at just outside of Dandridge. I want to regret two things. First is I want to thank the county commission, Jefferson County Republican Party for standing tall for the Second Amendment. I brought a few quotes of what our founding fathers thought about it. Apparently, it's not being taught in school. It hasn't been taught. It hasn't been taught in decades. This red flag law proposal is unconstitutional on two accounts. First, it doesn't give due process to the gun owner. It's done in secret behind the gun owner's back. Second of all, you could end up with SWAT team at your house just because a tailor doesn't like you. And doesn't like the flag that you own or don't. Often, a gun does these things. I'll leave this sign up here, and I'll leave that subject behind. This is an attempt to turn us all into snitches. And it's an early stage for totalitarianism, which I fought against in the Cold War. Now, I know extremism when I see it. And this is an early stage of it. Now, the next issue I want to talk about is the battery facility. How many of you have ever heard of something called electromagnetic pulse?
Paul, if you could use the microphone, because it's being recorded.
Those of you that are veterans know exactly what I'm talking about. If we have an explosion of a nuclear device 30 to 100 miles up, all of this electronic and electric stuff goes away in an instant. We had a natural event called the Carrington Event, and I urge you all to look it up. It happened on September the 1st, 1859. At that time, the only electrical thing we had was the telegraph. It shocked telegraph operators. It set telegraph operations on fire. Today, with all this electronic stuff, we have a giant antenna, which will concentrate that power. The Carrington Event was named after a British astronomer that observed sunspots. A solar flare traveling at a million miles an hour and a million degrees hit the Earth's magnetosphere. You could see auroralus as far south as New Orleans. We are overdue for an event like that. If we have this battery facility here, I want to know what they're going to do about that. I want to know a lot of things about what they're going to do about stuff like that.
Mr. Hammer, I have a commission request you want to finish. Do you want to finish your comments?
I want to know the details about firefighting under those conditions, when the emergency services don't work, the detonations don't work, when the vehicles won't drive to get to the fireside. There needs to be, the County Commission needs to require a giant water tank flare that can operate without electricity. We need to find out, we need to find out, all the central planners that are planning this stuff behind the backs of our elected officials about how they're going to resolve this. And I have little confidence based on TVA's behavior with the coal action situation. Is there anybody here from TVA tonight? I thought so. It's all I got to say. I just hope you enjoy that.
David Nelson, and I believe Taylor D. Forster, if you would like to speak for your behalf. Mr. Morton, do you give us your name and address?
Yes, sir. Taylor Forster, 1111 North North Shore Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee. Here speaking on behalf of Mr. Nelson. Recognizing kind of where we are in this process, and I'm just getting up to speed, as of earlier today, and getting involved in this, and I've talked to Mr. Seals, and kind of gotten some of the history, and seems like there was a determination made that this would be allowed in the A1 zone back in November. And so that's kind of what's brought us here now to deal with this resolution. Our request in this resolution is kind of balancing the overall objective as to where we are in this moment, and what kind of control that we have, or my client has, as a citizen, on his input and influence potentially, on crafting a resolution that is appropriate. And discussions come up with one proposed inclusion or amendment to the development standards that we'd like to see added. And that's that a battery-energy storage system facility will not be located within a five-mile radius of any Jefferson County school. And I know some of that had been addressed earlier, had concerns for local school systems and their proximity to this property and this development. So there's a question on whether this has to go back to the Regional Planning Commission to be considered or decided, and then brought back. And Tennessee Supreme Court says that the only requirement for something, an amendment to an ordinance, a proposed ordinance, that's come up from the Regional Planning Commission to have to go back is if it's a substantial change. And so, looking at what is a substantial change, case law says it's the gravity of the revisions, and whether the commissioner's recommendations would have been altered by these revisions. Again, we have 13 developmental standards that are listed. This is one more standard that's added to that. That is not a substantial change. We believe that the Board of County Commissioners here can make this amendment, if it so chooses, and pass that amendment with this resolution. It does not need to go back to the Regional Planning Commission. This is, you usually see this in the form of a property owner has filed for a rezoning. They want to change the zoning on their property. And so they submit an application requesting a certain zoning. That goes to the Planning Commission. Let's say the Planning Commission denies that request. That person appeals to the County Commission to have it considered by the County Commission. So County Commission comes up, and the property owner all of a sudden says, "No, I don't want that zoning. I want this other zoning." And so case law says, in that scenario, that that does, in fact, have to go back, because it was never considered. And a case on point is Westland West Community Association versus Knox County. And in that, as I was kind of addressing summarily, is that property owner requested a rezoning from Ag to Shopping Center, which allowed only retail uses. Planning Commission unanimously denied the rezoning request. They appealed to County Commission. The County Commission's property owner proposed and requested a planned commercial zoning. County Commission approved that, and then the people in opposition to this appealed. When that went up to the, ultimately went to the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court held that the proposed zoning change to planned commercial first had to be considered by the planning...
Your time is up, but they have a question that you continue.
Thank you. First, had to go back to the Planning Commission. And its justification and reasoning for that was that was a substantial change that never was addressed at the Planning Commission earlier. So for example, if the property owner had applied for Shopping Center, and there was discussion on the record, have you considered planned commercial? Would you be agreeable to planned commercial? And there was discussion on the record about planned commercial, and then that ended up at County Commission, then Shopping Center or planned commercial would be an appropriate rezoning designation, because it had gone through the process at the Planning Commission and been considered. My understanding and review of the record is that this, along with several other things, were discussed at the Regional Planning Commission meeting. That proximity to schools was listed as a concern, that there be some distance, and I think various distances were even discussed. So it was brought to the Planning Commission to consider. Now, they didn't include it in the recommendation, but this commission is the one that has the ultimate say-so as to what does get passed and what that language says. So our request, considering where we are, would be that we add the minor inclusion and revision, or addition, to require that any battery injury storage systems not be located within a five-mile radius of any Jefferson County school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Betts. And then Brian Scholl.
Ellen Betts. I live at 664 Heatherbrook Circle in Jefferson City. I'm not in favor of the BESs, but I did have a few comments on the resolution. My background is in accounting and contracts management for commercial and residential construction. And I happen to be married to a retired QA engineer for Nuclear Power, so we went through this a little bit and had some questions. Under the site plan, what are the code standards or regulations governing the site and its construction specific to a BES? And shouldn't they be spelled out in this resolution? I would add, we would suggest adding a list of all applicable regulatory commission, code of federal regulations, underwriters lab, national fire protection, and all state permits, and licensing as necessary for a BES to be provided to the County Zoning Board. I would add, developer, owner, operator shall provide copies of both normal operating procedures and emergency procedures, fire, flood, earthquake, utilized for the facility. And then a reference, refer and define a specific containment plan for runoff. Refer to the State of Tennessee Water Protection Plan. That's it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Brian Scholl.
Yeah, Brian Scholl. Would it be okay if we ran out of order and had Fernando from Plus Power talk first?
That's fine. I was taking this out here.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This is appearance of citizens or these citizens?
Are you residents of Jefferson County? No, they're with the BESs.
Yeah, we're not. We are, we're just here to answer questions regarding the BESs.
So if you get...
Well, this is appearance of citizens.
...the County Commission to allow.
This is appearance of citizens.
Right, this is citizens' comments time. I know y'all spoke at the public hearing, so I was going to ask that question. During the resolution, if you wanted to ask that question, you could do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And that's Brian, Ben, James Prentis, Paul Rogers. Are you a resident?
Hi, my name is Ben Wizel. I'm the Director of Permanence for Plus Power. The names that you just mentioned are all employees of Plus Power or Energy Safety Response Group. We are not citizens of the county. However, we are here in order to answer questions from the county, if the commission and the members of the public so choose.
Understood.
Thank you so much.
All right. Blavatsky or not, right to the citizens' comments. Y'all are applauding now. So, Mr. Dockery. First, as added to the agenda, you have a motion to make.
I do.
If you'll flick your screen up there for me real quick. Frank Scholl, go ahead.
Okay. I think I have a simple, straightforward motion to offer, but first, I want to explain why. I think it's become clear through the public input and all the comments. BZA said these facilities are allowed in A1. I don't agree with it. I know a lot of you all don't. Commission, we didn't have the authority. They had the authority to say that. As far as amendments, which is the resolution we'll be voting on next, some are better, I think having some regulations are better than having none. But I think there are so many more that are needed. It would be a substantial change and cause it to have to go back to the cities. So here's my motion. I move that we request the Planning Committee to consider moving battery-electric storage system facilities from A1 or Agricultural 1 zoning to I1 or I2, which is Industrial 1 or Industrial 2, and that they provide more stringent regulations for these facilities to help ensure the health and safety of employees of the facility and the public. Furthermore, a six-month moratorium on the construction of battery-electric storage system facilities shall be enacted immediately after the required public hearing. The public hearing shall be scheduled as soon as possible as allowed by public notice requirements. And if I get a second on that, then I've got...
You already have a second.
Okay.
So the floor is up for discussion. The motion is to refer back to Planning Commission to consider an I1 or a I2 zone?
Ask the Planning Committee to consider taking it completely out of A1 and moving it to either I1 or I2, develop more stringent regulations for these facilities. And as soon as a public hearing is conducted, we enact a six-month moratorium, so no construction can start until the Planning Committee's had time to do their work.
Floor is up for discussion. Mr. Brooks.
Mr. Dockery, when you say the moratorium to stop construction, would you really mean that no one can turn in any site plans for the next six months?
Correct.
Thank you.
Request to speak.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I don't believe, are you a resident of... What's going on?
We don't have any citizens' comments.
Well, if this is going to move forward, we'd just like to state an objection on the record on behalf of Power Plus and point out some of the legalities about what is being proposed.
I don't think this is an appropriate time.
I'm sorry, you're out of order. Mr. Seals.
Yes, sir. Is Doug here?
Yes.
Mr. Stran, County Attorney.
Oh, there he is, yeah. I guess my question as the zoning officer is, can the Planning Commission make it call without going back to the BZA?
Planning Commission make what call?
That he allowed in I1 or I2, after the BZA's done ruled it A1.
The way I understood his motion was that they were going to consider changing the resolution. That they were going to amend the zoning resolution ultimately to put those type facilities in I1 or I2.
Correct.
Not necessarily having anything to do with the resolution that's on tonight's agenda. Is that correct?
I guess help us understand how we can legally ask the Planning Committee to take this out of, or the zoning committee, take this out of A1 and put it in either I1 or I2.
Well, I don't think ultimately that... I think ultimately you can ask them to do whatever. I think that the primary question has to do with respect to what's currently in front of you as well, and what effect that could have with respect to any application that is submitted by the current, you know, proposer, the person, the entity that's proposing. The short answer is this: yes. You can request that the Planning Commission consider changing the zone where BES uses are allowed. Certainly. What effect that could have with respect to the current proposed BES is a little bit of a different question. In other words, like I think you wanted to put a moratorium on uses. Were you wanting to put a moratorium on the use that's currently... Was your motion intending to stop construction or the submission of site plans currently, like right now? Or is it to send it back for them to consider putting it in another zone? And when they consider it, also have that moratorium resolution in a public hearing?
If possible, my intent was or is to implement a moratorium so that no site plans or construction activities can start on any battery-electric storage system.
Currently, tonight. Are you wanting the moratorium to go into effect tonight?
Well, it's my understanding you have to have a public hearing.
That's correct.
So as soon as we can have...
It has to be a resolution. You'd have to have a resolution and a public hearing with respect to putting that stopgap, or that resolution in effect. But I think, go ahead, sorry.
Well, I was hoping the motion, when it says be enacted immediately after the required public hearing, that's my way of... public hearing, that's my way of asking commission to support this and support a public hearing so that we can enact the moratorium.
The short answer is yes, you can, as long as there's, as long as there is notice and a resolution with respect to the stopgap, I call it a stopgap, it's a moratorium to stop permitting or site plans. But again, I think the question is with respect to the use that is, that the BZA has said, hey, look, it's permitted in A1. Are you wanting to stop the construction, like say they submit a, you know what I mean? They submit a site plan tomorrow and they're on the August agenda. Are you wanting whatever motion you were making to stop that construction? Or are you wanting to stop future construction with respect to BESs uses in the zone?
That, that one and any, any other ones in the next six months after the public hearing?
With respect to the future ones in the moratorium that you're requesting, I think that yes, that's possi, that's clearly that the county legislative body and the planning commission can consider those changes to the zoning resolution, most certainly. Whether or not it's gonna affect, for instance, a use that's already in motion with respect to an application, if they're only, I understand that they're only agenda for August. I don't think they've submitted a site plan quite yet. But the BZA has said that this particular use is permitted in this zone. So with respect to timing, yes, with respect to future instances, with respect to this particular one, a moratorium and that stopgap resolution is a little bit more complicated for this reason. Number one, it has to be done by resolution, you have to have the public hearing, all that has to occur. There is also, there was a doctrine in the law, just so you guys know, back in, I think, February of 2022, I think y'all had considered a moratorium on subdivisions that were.
Yeah, that went well.
That were four. So you, you had to, during that, during that timeframe, you had to actually have public notice. That would be a resolution like any other resolution if you're gonna stop somebody from, from that use. With respect to that particular doctrine that was adopted by the Supreme Court in Conig and then subsequently with respect to Cherokee Country Club and Harding Academy, our legislature, I found this out yesterday, I wanna read this to you, because that was, CTAAS brought this to my attention. I, I didn't know that it had passed. But it went into effect July 1 of 2023, 15 days ago. And the General Assembly, this is public chapter 453, it said, declares property owners should expect the merits of a permit application will be judged on the law in effect at the time of the application. The interest of property owners to use their properties, they see fit and free from the threat of interference from potential local regulation outweighs the need of a local government entity to work out the details of a potential zoning change free from possible violations. To this end, the General Assembly rejects the pending ordinance doctrine described by the Tennessee Supreme Court in its opinion of Harding Academy Metropolitan Government of Nashville. I'll be honest with you, with respect to being a lawyer, that going into effect July 1, 2023, again, I didn't, I didn't know, I didn't have any idea that the legislature was considering doing away with the pending ordinance. I will tell you this, with respect to moratoriums in general, the legislature's action, in my opinion, as a lawyer, put moratoriums in question as to whether or not any local legislative body can even do that. Now, I'm not willing to tell you that they can't, okay? But I'm just telling you, the way I read that law, our legislature specifically expressed the intent to do away with it.
Well, the, I hear you saying, I mean, we need a resolution to request.
You certainly do.
So can I include that in this motion with these other requests, or does that need to be a separate motion?
Yeah, I don't think with respect to your motion tonight, for instance, let's say your motion passes. The way I understand your motion to be is it would go back to the planning commission to be a public hearing held with respect to a resolution and a moratorium. That's the way I understand your motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
I think with, I don't think by motion tonight, you could stop the process of somebody applying for a site plan tonight on a motion.
I'm not asking stop it tonight after the public hearing.
Yes, you, you could, unless that particular law I just read and found out about bars you from actually considering moratoriums, yes. But I can tell you that, I can tell you that it has definitely put a cloud over whether or not you can have moratoriums based on the pending ordinance doctrine.
I've got an umbrella.
Yeah. No, I'm not, I'm not saying you shouldn't, I just want you to understand that it's a, that, that at least in my mind creates a significant amount of doubt.
Well, we've heard comments that there's no, and I assume it to be true, it's not good to assume, but my mind was thinking if there's no contract with TVA, perhaps we could do this, have the public hearing and get the moratorium in place before a contract's signed and they can submit a site plan.
Maybe. You didn't know that before. I, I don't know with respect, just to the business aspect of that, but just legally, I think your motion is to, is to have a public hearing with respect to that moratorium. It would have to be a resolution that's drafted. And then they would have, there'd have to be a public hearing and a consideration by the planning commission post haste and you'd have to get that heard, yes.
Resolution by the planning commissioner of this body?
Well, this body would, would send that request to the plant, you're talking about a moratorium? I'm trying to figure out what your motion was with respect to that.
Let me read it again. Tell me, I move that we request the planning committee to consider moving battery electric storage system facilities from A1 zoning to I1 or I2, and that they provide more stringent regulations for these facilities to help ensure the health and safety of employees of the facility and the public. Furthermore, a six-month moratorium on the construction, or maybe it should read, we request from the planning committee, a six-month, well, we have to enact it. Furthermore, a six-month moratorium on the construction of battery electric storage system facilities shall be enacted immediately after the required public hearing. The public hearing shall be scheduled as soon as possible and allowable by public notice requirements.
With respect to, excuse me, with respect to the moratorium, case law is pretty clear that those ordinances, they have to conform to the statutory planning, notice, and public hearing provisions. So if it's gonna affect them, you, you, your motion would be to actually put in effect an ordinance that the planning commission could not accept any site plans for that, and you would have to notice that and have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
So, so what, if anything, do I need to change this motion to accomplish what I'm hoping to?
Number one, the first part of that motion is easy. You just, I mean, your motion, I understand it completely. All you have to do is make that motion, but that's like a separate, you're, you're just making, moving them to actually consider moving the zone where BESs is located.
And to, for?
But is that gonna be a separate motion to have a moratorium?
How do I need to do it?
I would do that.
Okay.
Okay, my question still is, Terry sends that to the planning commission, do they have the right to say, or they send it to the BZA? On what zone it needs to be?
What zone it's in, it follows the normal process. You have to have a public hearing, it has to be considered by the regionals, no, it has to be considered by the planning commi, the regional planning commission, it has to be considered by the regional, the other regional planning commissions in the county.
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand that.
Yes, you have to follow the normal process.
But he doesn't have to go to the BZA.
What now?
He don't go to the BZA.
No, as far as I know, no.
That's all I need to know.
It would have to go, it would have to follow, the normal zoning.
Okay.
Mr. Blavens.
I think we should have some legal updates sometime. I'll give you all.
Are you talking about?
You didn't go on that one either, you sat there with me. Moratorium, right?
You heard me correctly. I, I had, I had.
Maybe we could have some.
No, I had, I had no idea that our legislature passed a moratorium.
You know, annually.
Mr. Brooks.
Mr. Dockery, and I guess Mr. Drennan as well. So as a part of your motion, should we instruct our chairman to go ahead and call a special session and a public hearing immediately?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Drennan, but I think I need two motions. I need a motion to request the planning committee to consider moving these type facilities from A1 to I1 or I2, and then my second motion is a resolution.
Which is follow the normal process.
And my second motion is a resolution to hold a public hearing to implement a moratorium, or a moratorium for six months, is that correct?
Yes. Correct.
That would be commission doing it?
You'd have to have, you'd just have to notice that and have a public hearing.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Brooks?
Yes, sir, it does.
Mr. Seale.
Okay. This is not gonna be clear, but I'm gonna try to ask a question. All right, if this, if this passes, can the developers still go before the planning commission next month because they're on the agenda and our BZA has placed it in A1 legally? Can they still go before? And can a BESs facility come into our county? Or does this pause it until we have better rules for a BESs facility?
I don't think it would pause it currently as it stands to not, no.
So.
Sorry.
So even if this passes, this BESs facility proceeds and goes forward, so, okay, let's say this passes, then do we still need to, in order to have any rules at all, pass the other resolution?
I think maybe the easiest way to answer that is if, if, if you, that it would be whatever current planning regulations are in effect are the ones they would have to follow. And if those are, you know what, in other words, like the current ones would be the ones they follow, as I understand it.
So the only ones, okay, correct me if I'm incorrect, because they're on the agenda for next month's meeting, currently we have no county guidelines for BESs facilities, and they would still be able to potentially get a site plan approved by just following state and federal laws with no county restrictions in place?
It would follow the, if there, whatever site plan requirements are currently in effect.
Okay, so.
Can I respond to your question, Commissioner Hufaker?
I just wanna know legally what, yes.
It would have to be, it would be the ones in effect. If there's no new ones passed, it would be the ones that are currently in effect right now regarding site plans.
Let, Terry, let Mr. Scarlett hit it.
Okay.
Question, Mr. Drennan, walk me through the timeline on this, if they.
If they, the only way that it would stop this is if they do not file a site plan prior to that public.
Passage.
Passage of that moratorium and passage of the.
Yes.
Okay. So it, what is the date, is the date considered the day they walk in and file a site plan? Or the date that they're on the agenda for the planning commission? Or what, what date constitutes their date?
As I understand it, there's, there's two separate vested right issues. One comes into play when a preliminary site plan's already been approved, and there's a, a period of so many years when they have a vested right in that particular, whatever the regulations are in effect. The other one, and what I just read you that, that went into effect July 1, was they seem to indicate that that means application. Now, your guess is as good as mine as, as to what the legislature meant with respect to application of what I just read you. I don't know that. Does it mean getting on the agenda? Is that an application? I couldn't tell you. They, they definitely weren't clear. That's literally the only paragraph that's in that, that law, literally.
So unless, unless this moratorium was in effect prior to the application that you're stating, you're talking about?
A permit application will be judged. It's not really a permit, but they are applying. Again, I'm telling you, the law is literally what I just read you. That is it. It's the paragraph.
Request to speak, same time, Mr. Dockery, you wanna close?
Yeah, I guess first, Mayor Potts, I guess you're right one. How long would it take us to schedule a public, or schedule a special commission meeting to hold a public hearing to allow commissioners to prove a moratorium or not?
There's some different rules on public hearing. Seven days? Seven, eight. I know on planning, on zones, they have to have like two, which we would be different on a public hearing.
So probably within a week and a half, or no more than two weeks.
Drennan, could you answer?
With respect to just the, the body, you would have to, it would be, as I understand it, it would be a special call meeting with respect to the, whether or not this is considered a, a planning, you're talking about, you're talking about the moratorium.
Yeah.
Yes.
As far as I.
Could we just simply call a special call meeting, have a public hearing? And I know we can do that within five days, but we would wanna give.
My thought is, yes. I don't know that that question's ever been presented as far as whether or not any particular plan, if you're, if you're stopping, if you're stopping somebody from applying for a permit, whether that can be accomplished in five days.
Right.
I, I'll be honest with you, I, I know that a special call meeting's five days, clearly. My thought is yes, with a qualification, I hadn't considered it with respect to whether or not that, and how that might affect planning and a permit. But I will tell you that my gut is yes.
But your first motion does not include the board.
Correct.
Well, no, I mean, yeah, my first motion, I tried to write it all together, so I need to change my motion if I may, and I need, I have two motions to offer now.
Mr. Calm, it's okay with that, we'll consider the first part of your motion, and if you wanna close, then we will vote on that first motion.
So the first part of the motion is, or the first motion is, I move, we request the planning committee to consider moving battery electric storage system facilities from A1 zoning to I1 or I2 zoning, and that they provide more stringent regulations for these facilities to help ensure the safety and health of the employees of the facility and the public. That's my first motion.
All in favor of that motion, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Hold on, you've got a motion to amend, Mr. Drennan?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend that resolution to include a five-mile radius from any Jefferson County public school.
You wanna add that amendment to Mr. Dockery's motion?
Yes.
It's a motion to amend to include five-mile radius from a school to your.
I'll accept, I'll, I'll accept a, Commissioner Coleman wants to.
There's a second by Mr. Walker as well. Floor is open for discussion on that. If not, Mr. Drennan, you have anything else to say on that, or are you ready to vote?
Well, I, I would just like to stress that I'm really disappointed within our own body. I think that a lot of us, I'm here, we listen to what citizens say, and a lot of it we ignore. I also think that we basically sometimes as commissioners are not fully informed. I do not understand why we don't get a regular update of what our planning commission is doing, because the majority of us that I've seen, and I'm talking about the public, are very irritated about this being put into agricultural. I also know that I have talked to the emergency services in this county, none of them were contacted, none of them were talked to about what was going to take place within this county concerning this battery support, battery site. And these are the men and women who are gonna have to respond to any emergency, any emergency incident in this county. And we have people who know what they're talking about, emergency management, Jefferson County E911, we got one of the best E911s, if not the best in the state, and yet we're taking people who are trained to respond to emergencies, and we're not even listening to them. That's what I find fault with concerning planning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals, including myself. I should have asked questions a long time ago. Thank you.
So the motion to amend is to change the requirement to a five-mile radius from any, did you say any school?
Any Jefferson County public school.
Any public Jefferson County school.
Can I?
About, is there a product one close by?
Any.
I only, Commissioner, seven.
I'd like to change that to any school. Thank you.
I read your mind. So the motion is to five-mile radius of any school in Jefferson County. So the motion is to five-mile radius of any school in Jefferson County?
That's correct.
All in favor of vote yes to the amendment?
Uh, point of clarification.
Yes.
What I'm reading says move from A1 to I1 or I2. Oh, never mind, I'm sorry, go ahead. I misread. Been a long night already.
I'll, I'll favor of the amendment, the motion vote yes, opposed vote no. If it passes nineteen to one, that brings us back to the original motion from Mr. Doppler. As amended, the amendment includes the five-mile radius from any school in Jefferson County. Floor's open for discussion or amendment, or are you ready to vote? I assume you're ready to vote on that motion as amended, which includes the school radius. So if you're in favor of the motion as amended, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. And it passes eighteen to one abstaining. Mr. Doppler, you have a second motion you'd like to present.
Motion two is I move that we approve a six-month moratorium on the construction of battery electric storage system facilities effective immediately after the required public hearing. And the public hearing shall be scheduled as soon as possible according to public notice requirements.
How long, did you say, on moratorium? Six months?
Six months.
Okay. Mr. Hearn, I'm trying to get you in, you deserve... Now, a motion, we have a second, request a speak or amendment. This is to have a moratorium as soon as we can legally and publicly advertise and have a public hearing on moratorium for sixty days on battery, battery energy storage systems. All right, Mr. Scarlett.
I can't support that moratorium. One is, we couldn't even get one to, uh, slow down the subdivisions, and the Yankees coming in. We've been invaded again. Uh...
But they're not...
But the moratorium, I don't think, is going to do what the citizens want it to do. It's, according to Mr. Drennan, he said it does not stop what is in progress. And it does not, if they file a site plan prior to the moratorium, or if their application is prior to the moratorium, it does not stop that. Is that correct or not, Mr. Drennan? Please.
With respect to whether or not, it, it would have to be pursuant to the law I just read you.
Yes, sir.
Whether or not, I, I, I believe that there was, and I, I did my best to explain, um, what the legislature, I believe, attempted to do. Um, what I can tell you is that's not been tested and ain't going to be tested for a little while legally. Um, the way I would understand it is that, yes. If the moratorium was passed prior to at least an application, whatever our legislature meant by that, um, then that would stop that. If it was done prior to that consideration, yes. I think that was your question.
It was.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Norton?
Would it be possible to hear from Taylor Forrester again? Um, he seemed to have some really good ideas.
Sergeant?
Thank you, Taylor Forrester. You got any more information for us? I think your first idea was really good. If you've got anything else here that will help us.
And I think Mr. Drennan's correct. And I wasn't aware of the change in the pending ordinance doctrine. That was literally, I guess, fifteen days ago. Cause I snuck over there during the meeting. It kind of dawned on me that I dealt with that in another matter a couple of months ago, a few months ago. And brought it up to him and thought, you know, everything would be fine to send back. You've got time within it. And apparently, um, our legislator, legislative has, has changed course on that. And I, I think he is right. I think a moratorium is, is, is difficult. Uh, it's not impossible, but the concern now without the pending leg- uh, ordinance doctrine would be kind of first and time first and right in the sense of, you know, as, as Mr. Scarlett said, the possibility of them submitting, you know, their, their, uh, plan, site plan approval, concept plan, and having that submitted, whether that, whether that vests them. Now, you know, Best Rights Act does say that it would require a, uh, an approved preliminary plan or concept plan for them to have vested rights. So there, it's undetermined at this time whether this new change to the pending ordinance doctrine affects, um, whether you s- whether the vested right, uh, is triggered by the approval of a concept plan. I still think it would probably be subject to the approval of a concept plan based on the Best Rights Act. And it's a, it's a enumerated statute and, and sets forth in great detail what tri- what triggering dates you have. And, um, again, our, our request was, our suggestion was that we have, um, this one additional developmental standard. And it's, I believe that it's not a substantial alteration to what was submitted by Planning Commission. It was considered by Planning Commission. If green notice requirements have been satisfied. Um, again, if, if, kind of the safest course in trying to create something that serves possibly the county in the best, best, um, possible way, based on where we are today, maybe to, to add that amendment is, is our suggestion.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Saffron?
Okay, for clarification from Doug Drennan, or if Pop would like to chime in. We... Well, we can still pass this moratorium, but as an added safety to us, we need to address the resolution. And if somebody amends it, it gets amended. But we're s- we still need to vote on the resolution that was in question so we have some guidelines and rules that the county has in place. Is that correct?
I'll answer that first, Doug. Speaking as a zoning officer, yes, I think you should base those because they're way more stringent than what we have now.
Thank you. Okay, so for clarification, we won't have any rules in place at all if, well, I mean, minimal.
Site plan requirements, yes.
But not as far as disposal and...
Correct.
Bonds, if they change companies. Not knowing how this will all play out, it would be to the county's benefit if we did something with the resolution too. And not assuming if this moratorium passes, no BES facilities are coming to Jefferson County. I just want clarification so everybody on the county commission understands how crucial and important it is, the vote for the resolution.
Yeah. I, I think, I think with respect to, uh, whether or not, whether or not you should vote on that resolution, if, if you approve Commissioner Doppler's, um, motion, you know, or, and you have that public hearing and you have that moratorium, what effect, I, I'll be honest with you. It makes it a little bit more tricky with respect to where that puts you procedurally. If you pass the resolution as it is and/or you amend it to add some insubstantial changes, what's, whatever they may be, uh, where does that put you? In other words, if you're going to pass, that's something I hadn't considered. If you're going to pass that tonight as well as pass his moratorium. Is that what you're asking, if you should do both?
Yes.
Uh, I'll be honest with you, that's a, that's a tricky one. Um, that, the, the one thing is for sure, I will, I will say this. There is definitely, as Mr. Forrester alluded to, and, um, a- as I've said, there is definitely uncertainty with respect to the moratorium and legally. And I understand Commissioner Doppler's stance on that, and I respect that. Um, so if, if you, if that fails, if by chance for some reason that fails legally, you pass it and it fails, the question is, is what would be the default? My thought would be, yes, you would have that default if you did pass it. But if you, if you pass that and then you, and you pass a moratorium prior to the application, that's a, that's a jigsaw puzzle legally. So, um, I, I'm not, I'm not telling you that, uh, you shouldn't. But I, as your lawyer, telling you that I know what effect that might have, I can't. But I can tell you that, um, the reg- the regulations that are in place are, do have, are more stringent than the ones that you have in place, for sure. And if the change is not substantial, like we talked about, you can make changes to the one that's pending in front of you.
So it's just a safety net to, to...
That would be my argument if I had to try it.
Have both. But we definitely, the resolution has to be addressed.
It is on the agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Carmichael?
You know, after sitting here and listening to this all night, you know, there's only one thing that we can say is, is that, you know, we would all like to stop something. That's the common goal of everybody in this room, because I don't think anybody really likes it. But here's the point. It's hard to change the rules in the ballgame after the game started. And you're going to have to listen to reality sometime tonight. Tonight is, I got the floor. The reality is, I'm not for it. But the point is, the reality of the whole deal is, anything that you do tonight to try to put the brakes on this under a challenge is probably going to fail. Because it, it's like the attorney's telling everybody. I mean, Dave's good at this, he knows what he's doing. But the point is, anything that you change under a challenge in the court of law, you're going to lose that challenge on the pure fact is, you're, you're, you're trying to change a rule. Now, what I would like to hear at this moment is the young lady that was fixing to come up here and speak, and nobody wanted to hear her speak? She's the young lady that I want to hear speak about this.
Okay, that's your, what?
Uh, Melanie Davis, I'm here on behalf of Plus Power, um, city attorney for the city of Miraval. And I do land use, uh, and development law. Uh, first of all, it'd be our position that this is a substantial change. The five-mile radius change around any school would prevent, basically, these facilities going in because the existing regulations already deal with them having to be next to a substation. And the substation that we're talking about here is within a five-mile radius of a school. And so this is a substantial change that would block, in fact, the use that has been proposed and discussed extensively in multiple public meetings. It is the definition of a substantive change. So that would have to go back through the Planning Commission process in order for you to be able to enact that, to get a recommendation on that. So we submit that's not something that you can do tonight legally is to vote on something like a five-mile radius within a school change to the existing proposed, uh, regulations for these BES systems. But that's a first thing. Secondly, um, it's also our position, if you read the Cherokee Country Club case that Mr. Drennan referred to, that, um, you also would have to go back to Planning Commission on this moratorium issue. That case actually involved a moratorium the city of Knoxville attempted to put on Cherokee Country Club to prevent it from tearing down a building that they thought was historic. And what this Tennessee Supreme Court held was that if you do that, you have to go back through the planning process. You have to have public hearing, you have to have Planning Commission recommendations. You have to go through all of those things in order to enact a proposed moratorium. Now, that was before this new law that basically, I agree, did away with moratoriums because it allowed rights to vest when you apply. And I don't think there's any question, if my client submitted an application for a site plan, and they've actually submitted a site plan that they've at that point applied. And that is different from approval, which was the prior standard under the Bested Rights Act from 2014. The legislature just made it easier for your rights to vest when you apply for a certain zoning use. It, your rights now vest on an application. There's no definition where application means approval that I can think of. Those are different things. So once my client has applied for a site plan, it's our position that those rights have vested. And so that means they can proceed on the law as it existed at the time of the application. You can't change the rules on them midstream and say, well, we know you've applied, but we're not going to change the rules to make it this much harder for you to get the, the approval that you're seeking. That is, is simply not allowed legally because of the very theory that you were just discussing, which is that it's not fair to change the rules in the middle of the game. And my clients applied at the time, um, that they originally asked for, what zone does this belong in? The BZA told them it belongs in A1 because it's like wind, it's like solar. Those are similar uses. This is where it goes. So that is what happened and what brought us here today. My clients went under the laws as they existed at that time and followed the legal procedures since that time. This is their ninth public meeting following the process that's in place. As opposed to a new process.
Another question for you, uh, Ms. Norton.
Does your client indeed have, or have applied?
Have they applied?
I'll answer that, yes.
Okay.
Yes, we've, we filed the fee.
Have you submitted the, the plans?
We have applied and submitted the fee for the application. The actual site plan is ready to be submitted, but it's not been...
Does your client own the property that you proposed, they proposed to put the BES on?
They have an option to purchase it.
They have an option to purchase it, but they don't own it?
That's correct.
Does your client have a contract with TVA?
No, that, that request was proposed...
Or any other electric company?
No.
Thank you.
One more question.
If I answer your questions, I, I just...
Go ahead, sorry.
Those were the points, I guess, that I wanted to address, but I didn't...
You're, you're getting real close, but see, your company is a private entity, correct?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I believe, uh, Janet Norton has the floor.
Well, I'm, I'm finished.
Ms. Carmichael was done, and I defer, and Ms. Norton, so...
I do believe I have the floor, Mr. Norton.
You didn't have the floor. Janet had the floor, and then Janet had the floor next.
Okay, go ahead.
Roll up, in other words. Okay. You're a private entity, correct?
My client is a private company.
A, a private company, just like my business or anybody else that's in business.
Well, they're utilities, so that makes them a little bit different.
So when you step over into utilities, you know, that changes your being.
Yes.
As what you are. Now, here in Jefferson County, back in the 1930s, somebody had an idea to build a couple of dams. And you know, was that a good idea to build dams? And if you would have asked somebody in 1935, they probably wouldn't have agreed with you. But you know, now we've got a footrace going on for everybody to want to live on the lake. That wasn't a very popular lake. That moved a lot of people. And it's been my experience, when you deal with utilities, that you're fighting this losing battle because you are a utility. Now, I don't agree with your technology. I'll make that point up, up, up front. I don't agree with your technology, but I believe in doing things in the correct manner, in the correct order. You know, you can see what's going on in this room. Everybody's upset, nobody is well-informed. And you know, this has turned into a huge mess. That, that, you know, I really appreciate everybody that's coming in this room tonight for one reason. You're learning how government works. You've found out what county commissioners do and how business is being conducted. And everybody should be more involved in county government. And I appreciate everybody showing up and getting involved. If you understand or not, you know, find out everything you can from anybody you can and learn how this works. But you know, my point, I understand where you're coming from with this because this game has done began.
It's been going on for almost a year.
Over a year.
Yes.
You know, almost a year.
Yes, and my clients have shown up and answered questions and been available for every one of those Planning Commission meetings.
So I think right now, eh, what we could be safe in saying, we're arguing a moot point. Thank you.
Mr. Carmichael, make sure that I'm clear that you are complacent this time. All right, thank you. Uh, you're out of order on these commissioners. You have to blow, uh, Mr. Snoggrass.
Okay. So this, this question is for each member that's here tonight from Plus Power. You've heard everybody here, and, and at this time, the community doesn't want this service in our area. I think it's pretty clear, as other members have said. So as part of corporate social responsibility, and I like to hear this from each of you, wouldn't it be better to step back and let us address some of these issues and work this out in a reasonable manner rather than just railroad in?
If I could defer to my client, that's where the client wants to...
It's just a, it's just a yes or no question.
You could defer to the, uh, chair, pre- the president of the county, the, the representative.
Again, it, it's just a simple yes or no question.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. Based on all the opposition you've heard from our county residents, uh, tonight, as a good corporate social responsibility, wouldn't it be better to step back and let us address some of these concerns as a body and as a community, and then work together on moving forward?
So just to qualify my answer, we have been working with the county for over a year. We have been, this is our ninth public hearing. We have been following the process that the county has required us every single step of the way. We've been answering questions every time that we've been asked questions. We actually met with Marion and, and Mr. Mike Foley. We've been literally talking with everybody that have questions or... We've been literally talking with everybody that have questions, that have asked us questions, have provided our contact information repeatedly. We gave your contact information last time. We have given our contact information to every planning commissioner in the cities that we attended. I think we have, from our view, we have been doing that. We have been following the request to answer questions and work with the county. So, to your question is, yes, that's what we have been doing. And I think, for, I mean, we feel, we really feel for everybody to, I mean, we don't like the neighbors and the people here to feel that we're trying to railroad anybody. But we have been attending every meeting. We have been answering questions. Like, that's a bit of a, we're trying to help, so we're on the, okay, we're trying to help, we're answering questions, but at the same time, everybody's saying, "Well, you haven't shown up." We have been following your process. I think that's, we're trying to get a little bit of slack on that sense, whereas, like, tell us what to do. We have been following what the county has told us to do. We've been talking to absolutely everybody that asks us questions. And, I mean, if anybody here has asked us to talk to them, and we have said no, I would really like to ask that question.
Okay. So, back to the first part of that question. Based on what you've heard here tonight, do you think everyone in our community has been well-informed and ready to go forward with this?
No.
Okay.
Completely no. And, but that's where we've been following the guidance from the county.
Okay.
So we've been following the notices that the county does for any matter from the county. Now, that is where we've been working with, what we've been asked to do. So I think that is, if we have been asked to talk to everybody here, we would have. And we have provided, I mean, Marion Knight has my email, my phone number, she has absolutely everything that I, I mean, we've been answering emails repeatedly. Again, I just wanna say that we have not been hiding. We're again here this week, and we've been coming every time that it's requested, so...
So I think in general, though, our community doesn't feel that we are fully protected from some of the risk associated with your technology.
We can address, I mean, we actually brought two experts that have, I mean, it was mentioned, for example, the Arizona fire.
So...
The farm, I know, it's great.
I appreciate that. But I think, just, my point is, we're in contention, we're in contention, so why do we have to be in such a rush? Let us do some things to protect our community prior to that arrival.
That I understand, from our side, we just haven't been in a rush, that we've been working with the county for quite a long time.
I understand.
And we understand where you sit on that, but...
Well, for, I think for many of us, it feels like we're trying to push this across the finish line, and we're trying to pump the brakes here a little bit to make sure we got our communities protected.
I understand.
Thank you.
Mr. Blair.
Welcome back. And I'm proud to face it, that's true. So, what you all are seeing is how government works, but what hopefully you'll see is what your government should do, which is stop policies like this, to come into two places, excuse me, companies like this to come into places. Turn the mic off. I don't need it.
The internet's not on anyways. We shouldn't be teaching sign language up here too, shouldn't we? But we don't do that either. That's how your government works for you. Okay, what you have is a company that likes governments like this, that can come steamroll over silly BZAs and silly planning commissions that don't know what they're doing. So it got here tonight because none of us really paid attention either. And I'm sorry, I hope we can fix that.
Ross.
Oh, I think that's well said, Mayor. Furthermore, you're the one that seats the board, Mayor.
Hi, Chairman. Sir. I do. If, if Mr. Blair continues to denigrate the planning commission, I served on that thing, Mr. Paul served on that thing, Krista Austin served on that thing, and we've worked on this for years. So, for him to say we're silly...
Well...
I write the court order on that, if he thinks we're dumb. Okay, all right.
Well...
He said he is complacent.
Well, I've got something else to add, then. Because I watched a video at 3:45 this morning of your aw's last meeting, where you and Pop Seals had a lot to say about the county commission. So maybe we should all watch that.
Yeah, watch it.
I mean, well, I mean, you all said we were, you know, let's see.
I said all of them. I don't know what to say.
I didn't say me, the county commission.
The motion that we have.
Sure.
And Ms. Facher and Mr. Reed.
Okay. Wait, will you all stay up here? Okay.
I understand.
I've been to several of the meetings you've been at, and you have worked on it for a long time. I don't know why in the process we're the last place for it to land, but we are. So I have some questions. I think at multiple meetings that I've been at, residents have said to you they would like to see fire hydrants. Now, I know our planning commission didn't specifically tell you, you have to have fire hydrants, but I think it would make the residents feel safer. I know your cells are supposed to combust inside, they stay in a controlled, contained unit. But I'm gonna give you an example, maybe it's a bad example. At the Field of Dreams at our rec center, they have a defibrillator there. Well, you're not planning on everybody having a heart attack, but if somebody does, then you have some safety equipment there. Is it gonna save everybody? No. Maybe the fire's outside your fence, and we don't want it to get into your unit. Maybe somebody opens a door when they shouldn't have, because it would have, it would have self-contained, but somebody made an error and opened it, so the fire does spread. But, but I think it's just, well, you have it there as a safety net, hoping the accident never happens, but if it does, maybe there's something that might help you. Maybe the whole community burns anyway, but at least you had something there, whereas if you don't have anything at all, and something happens, there's nothing to help you. So, so I wanna ask, and I wanna bring this up, because it's been brought, I've been to multiple meetings you all have been to, and I've heard you speak. You have been in our community for a while. But, so I want to ask, like, substantial changes, would have, is a fire hydrant, or however many, a substantial change? Well, in Texas, your site plan is two and a half acres, your footprint's 7.7 acres, and you have two fire hydrants. I don't know what the site plan is for this, but I know it's a 30-acre site, which is much larger than you have in Texas, and you put in fire hydrants for those citizens, and I think our citizens would appreciate it if we had fire hydrants. The other thing, and you may already have this, do you monitor the gases from the inside? Do you have venting systems that tell you the gases, so you can ensure it's not going out into the public? So I don't know if you can answer that now, but...
So, starting from the second question on the gases, that is probably the fastest one. These systems have many redundant monitoring protection systems, basically, where every cell is monitored from a voltage, current, and temperature perspective. So if any of the cells fail at any point in time, we will know every second of the way. So, when gases are not emitted in a regular operation of these batteries, so that would imply, if there's any gas, that would imply there will be a failure on one of these cells. We would know that immediately, and that is when the monitoring is the first piece. Second piece is, there is detection on gas, and there's a third piece behind, that is, there are sparkers that are basically getting rid of the, of the, of the gas, if any, if any gas builds up. And a fourth piece of that is that also deflagration vents, that if any pressure starts building, the system itself would open the vents and would release the gases. These gases, according to the regulations, like the UL 9548, and we have the experts here, that they can talk thoroughly, that we can bring them to talk thoroughly about the tests that have been done, the type of gases that are seen in these, in these systems. These gases are not dangerous compared to what the citizens have mentioned. They haven't measured. All the gases that lithium-ion batteries are released, they are all have been measured, and it's mostly hydrogen, but it's not a dangerous gas, and that can be all managed through those four things. So it's monitoring, is the deflagration vents, is the sparkers, and then there's also the, how the batteries are designed.
Okay. So can you, through technology and research, prove to us that if there is a failure and any gases at all are emitted from your batteries, we have some assurance that we're not sending our firemen and EMS into those containers when we think it's burned out, yet there still could be gases present? So...
Within, sorry, sorry, go ahead.
So I just wanna make sure we're keeping the residents in our community safe, because you all don't even have anybody here, so we're going in.
So within the, the conditions that are proposed in the 2316 regulations, there is a requirement for anybody, not us, anybody that goes into applying for a site plan, that they need to submit the Fisher report, that is basically a third-party report showing all these results. The results of, what are the gases that they see whenever they do what they call a large-scale fire testing? So they basically would set these enclosures into failure and understand what are the implications of having this into failure. And all that is in this report that we're supposed to submit with the application of a site plan, according to the regulations. That is, if you pass the regulations, anybody that submits a site plan will have to provide what is called the test, the large-scale fire testing results for the system that they're, they're proposing. And that is where all the information comes. We actually have provided this report to all the fire departments when we met them back in the fall of 2022.
If the commission votes to approve the conditions tonight, that's one of the conditions.
Okay. And then, I know people have requested the ring, and you're, the eye ring, the show... The ring. I would think you would train our fire and EMS in advance, but the compliance standards that Miriam referenced, maybe you follow all those, and I just don't know it. The other good point... But I think Mr. Snodgrass was trying to say is, could we work here and roll it to our next meeting, where we might be able to address some of these issues, or not? I don't know the answer to that question. It would be probably what you say, but I...
So we brought, as Fernando mentioned, we brought two of the nation's leading battery safety, battery storage safety experts with us tonight, because we, I'm sorry.
Oh, good point.
We brought with us two of the nation's top battery safety experts with us tonight, both firefighters with 20 years of experience, both of whom worked for the National Fire Protection Association and helped to draft the safety regulations related to stationary battery storage systems.
Okay. Can I ask you a question first?
Sure.
How much liability insurance do you have as a company? Like, if, if there was an accident, and there was personal damage to, let's say, death to some neighbors, total loss of their home, whatever, how much insurance do you cover to, for that?
I do not know the answer to that question. I'd be happy to confirm it. Just like all the, all the other questions that have been asked, as we've done for the last nine meetings, we are happy to discuss our projects. We are happy to answer these questions that the community has. We, we hear, we hear you. We know that you have concerns, we know the community has concerns. We're not shying away from, from answering these concerns, these questions.
And another point I would like to make, which you may have enough, I mean, you may have a great policy, I don't know, but the same as in some of our rules before, we put, if it's ever sold, then those people have to follow the, you know, the company has to follow some, something. And we don't have that currently in our rules.
We do. So, so one of the conditions, correct me if I'm wrong, is that any condition that's approved tonight will apply if we sell the battery. We have no intention of selling the battery. That's why we're here years ahead of, of construction, because we wanted to create a relationship with the county. And we're, we're trying to provide this information, and we met with the fire marshals. We've met with Jefferson City, we've met with Dandridge, we've met with all the communities here, because we, and you know, you've been there, that we have stood here for hours. We were here the last time for four hours, answering questions. We'd be happy to do it again. And to, to your earlier point, we'd be happy to bring up our battery safety experts. We believe we'll be able to address a lot of the concerns that people have.
Okay. You can let them go ahead.
Sure.
I mean, if that's okay, can they speak their...
Let's, uh...
I don't think they should. We can go forward on that.
Okay.
Let's, uh, let Mr. Reed speak. We still have the resolution coming up after this, so...
I just wanna make a more, a statement for the record. We are, we are available to speak, we're available to answer any questions, if you'd like to.
Delano, Mr. Reed. Questions being called for. Any opposition?
Yeah, although, I like to say to him, you have not contacted the Department of Fire Department on any training or nothing.
The common question is not debatable, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Solomon? This is...
The question has been called for. It's not debatable or anything else. It's up to the body. So at this point, you're gonna have your vote. Not meaningful, I'm sorry. Mr. Solomon, I'm giving you a chance to make a point.
Go ahead. I've got time for it.
Any opposition, I'm calling for a question. Anybody opposed? Y'all ready to vote? This is on the moratorium, this is motion number two. I'll, go ahead, Sam.
No, I don't, I don't.
All right. All in favor, vote yes. Oppose, vote no. No. That brings us to the resolution, 2023-16. Mr. Herndon will say that. Except the, um, it's a resolution to meaning the zoning regulation of Jefferson County, Tennessee by regulating battery, energy, storage systems in Jefferson County, Tennessee.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Computer's on the charger.
Okay.
But, no. But thank you for asking.
You want to amend the motion, or you might...
I want to add to the resolution. We've already heard from the attorneys tonight.
Mr. Scarlett, hold on. We have a motion and a second on this.
I don't, my computer's on the charger.
I think you, I think you were...
I have to make a motion before you make the motion. You gotta go on, you can go ahead.
Okay.
I mean, we gotta get the resolution on, on there.
I'm getting cranky, John Neil.
The second's been withdrawn, so we don't have a motion or a second on the resolution. Now we do.
Okay. Mr. Herndon, I would like to make an amendment. Can you hit your magic button?
I'll hand you your magic button.
Oh. These batteries are just unreliable, I'm sorry. I would like to add to Section 2, an item that states the best facility may not be located within a five-mile radius of any Jefferson County school. So that would be Section 2, and if this body approves, it would be Item N. And it's Resolution 2023-16.
So we have a motion to a meeting, and we have a second by Mr. Douglas. Mr. Solomon?
Did we just vote on that? Did Marcus Reed? Yeah.
Uh, hey, Sammy, that was referring to Terry's motion. This is about the resolution tonight. Does that, does that answer your question? Okay.
Mr. Scarlett.
Is that a substantial...
Well, you know, you've heard a lot of lawyers and a lot of lawyer answers tonight. What I, what I would tell you is this, I can, I can only cite you to the, at least the two cases that I know that have actually addressed what a, what a substantial change is. There's not a bright-line rule as to whether a, a change is substantial or not. It's gonna be based on the facts. It's going to be based on the facts, the gravity of the change, uh, and, and, and those kind of concerns. That's what we've already talked about. So, just to test, just to say one way or the other, whether a court would say it's a, a substantial change, I couldn't tell you. I know that the Supreme Court has held such items, like if you expand, um, a requirement that a property owner has to have ninety acres instead of ten, the Supreme Court's held that's a substantial change. On the other hand, uh, Court of Appeals has said, hey, look, a buffer zone that you might add to one, an ordinance that's, that has been submitted to you is not a substantial change. I'd love to be able to tell you that here are the five criteria to tell you what a substantial change are, but that don't exist. So, I do not know as to whether or not, it's going to be based on the facts. And this is all assuming this is tested in court. And it's going to be based on the facts as to whether or not that five-mile radius is, is, or any other change is substantial. If regardless of what the commission does approve, or if they don't approve anything, I, I will say this before the vote is. In, in reviewing the resolution, there is not a severability clause at the end. That is not a substantial change. That is a sentence at the end that says, hey, look, if this ordinance is challenged, uh, and one part of it is struck down, the rest of the resolution will stay in effect. It should be at the bottom of all the resolutions. The only thing I would ask the commission to do is to, if, whatever, if, if you want to amend it before amendments close, I wanted to bring that to your attention. At the bottom of the resolutions, yeah, I've, I've taken, this, this was drafted, this was drafted off of, pulled off of just a, a ton of resolutions that we've done in the past. I didn't draft this one, but I just want you to know that if you are going to consider that, I would ask that you add this particular paragraph. And I have the.
Court of order.
No change. No other requests to speak? Ms. Huffaker.
Okay. So, Doug Drennan, question. The statement you just said is a clause that we need to put in the resolution. So, if we modify it any at all, if somebody goes against it, it, it's only for the portion they don't agree with.
We call it housekeeping boilerplate language that's in the resolution. Basically, what that says is that the provisions of the resolution are severable, meaning that if a court decides that one aspect of it should be struck down, that the rest of it will remain in effect. It's about each, at the end of every one of them.
Okay. So, I want to make, add an amendment to the amendment, but not tied with the school amendment. Can I do that? I want to make another amendment on, on the.
You'd be in.
No, not for that. I want to add something different. So, do I need to wait until this amendment? The vote goes up?
If you vote on the school amendment, then you add your amendment.
Okay.
Or we got the amendment on the floor.
Right. Other requests to speak? All right. All in favor of the amendment to the resolution adding five-mile radius of any Jefferson County school? Vote yes. Oppose, vote no. It passes seventeen to three, one abstained. So, the resolution has been amended to add item N, I believe?
Section.
Section two, item, do you want me to give you my note, Frank? Okay.
So, that passed. Ms. Huffaker, you'll get motion or amend or whatever the issue is you're supposed to do. So, what's your motion?
Okay. I want to amend that the best facilities have to have fire hydrants as according to the recommendation of the planning commission and that the hydrants are tested and maintained by the developer as long as the development is presently located at the best facility. Say that again. Did you get it? Well, I don't have it written down, so, okay. So, I want to add that the best facilities have to have fire hydrants, which I think the frequency would have to be determined by the planning commission based on site size and that the hydrants will be maintained or make sure they're usable throughout the project of the best facility by the, whoever's operating the best facility, essentially so the county doesn't have to pay to maintain the hydrants.
Okay. We have a motion.
Oh, wait, I'm not finished. Also, that there's a tree buffer around the three sides, not the side that attaches to the substation at the, I prefer, three rows of trees according to the planning commission. Funding and mass training will be given in advance and that the liability is defined by the best corporation and the liability follows with the next company.
Do we have a second for the motion to amend? I see you want to speak, Mr. Brooks. We have a second. Mr. Brooks.
I would just caution Ms. Huffaker in this body, we don't want to get into substantial changes, opening ourselves up for challenge.
We'll have a clause that states they can go against whatever they feel is substantial, right? Doug Drennan, I have a question. So, is this too much information?
You ask again, I'm sorry.
Is it too much information? Is it too substantial?
Are you ask, are you wanting to actually just put a requirement in there that they have to have, um, fire hydrants?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, okay, fire hydrants, most important. Number one, fire hydrants. So, if I just have fire hydrants, is that too? I'll drop off everything else if, if it's not too substantial to add fire hydrant with the second amendment. If it's too much, I'll drop off the fire hydrants.
Just deal with them. I'll try to deal with them one at a time, best I can.
Let's just focus on fire hydrants and forget the rest.
Whether, again, whether or not that's specific just in and of itself is substantial would only be determined by a court. But, um, I think you would, my only caution there would be, um, is there a standard other than simply to have fire hydrants? And I think I understand what you were trying to, to put in your motion, that there would be somebody to determine how many fire hydrants would go for a particular, is that correct?
Well, I always, no, I just, I just would like to see fire hydrants, period. But somebody's going to have to determine how many need to be there, so I figure it should be the planning commission. But I don't want to make.
That's out of my wheelhouse as to who should.
Okay. I just want to know, okay. Forget about who determines it.
Okay.
If I just put a request for, if I put fire hydrants are required at the site, is.
You can definitely make that amendment, whether or.
I'll just make that amendment. I'm changing it, just to add fire hydrants at the site.
You agree with Mr. Collins? Mr. Brooks, you request to speak or? No, you got, no, okay. No requests to speak. So, the amendment is to include fire hydrants at the site, correct? Is that pretty much it? So, all in favor of that motion to amend the resolution? Vote yes. Oppose, vote no. That passes sixteen to four. That brings us back to the resolution as amended times two. Yes, sir. Apparently, there needs to be an amendment according to the attorney added, maybe to Schreiner's error or.
Did Ms. Huffaker's motion not include that?
No, it's just my.
Okay.
Mr. Bales.
I'd like to add these wording that, uh, Mr. Drennan proposed to be a further resolved any provision of this resolution or the application thereof to any person or circumstance deemed invalid that is in that such thing deleted, which shall not affect the provision or the application of the resolution which can be given effect without any valid provision or application. And to the, to that end, the provisions of this resolution are entirely being severed.
It doesn't kill the whole thing. Motion, second. Ms. Scarlett. Seeing no requests to speak, all in favor of this amendment to the resolution adding the language suggested by the county attorney. Vote yes. Oppose, vote no. Passed twenty-nine, one abstained. Right now, the resolution has been amended to add five-mile, uh, distance from any Jefferson County school, fire hydrants, and the language from the attorney that should have already been included in the resolution is just an omission. So, you'd have the resolution with those amendments. You want to read them? I'm sorry, I didn't mean that. But distance, hydrants, and protection of the, that's about where we're at. And, uh, that's including what else is in the amendment. So, all in favor of the resolution as amended. Vote yes. Oppose, vote no. Resolution passes twenty to zero, one abstained. So, the resolution passes as amended. And we'll try to get that typed up for you and, and back out to you. Yes, ma'am.
We'll take a five-minute break if people want to leave.
Yeah, we'll take that. I know for some of you don't want to hear the rest of what, what we're doing, but you're welcome to stay. Next item on the agenda is, uh, approval of notaryship bonds. Mr. Herndon has given you a handout. He has probably added more to those. He has. We have a motion by Terry Dockery and a second by A.J. Walker to accept those. All in favor of vote yes. Oppose, vote no. Uh, sorry.
Yes.
If your computer's dead, I'm sorry. So, if you, uh, if you have no power, shall we say, uh, Mr. Herndon could, uh, if both of you. And Mr. Still asked me to clar, clarify that it was the legislature and we did it separately, right? It's just while they're both, I got it wrong.
The Republican, the Republican Party sent the legislature, the speakers of the House and Senate, and the governor, a second amendment resolution. The, the county resolution was similar to it, but they were completely separate.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, uh.
Oh, that's yours. Okay, sorry. Sorry.
I like the way my papers too.
I'm a thief.
I was voting on, uh, notaryship bonds. Never had anybody vote no on one yet. Sammy, abstaining. Thank you, Sammy. Thank you. Okay. That passes twenty to oh. Next item comes from the nominating committee, needs no motion or second, come from the committee. Animal control oversight board, first of all, the care representative that's being appointed was Linda Tams, not Naums. She's president, uh, and she's continuing to turn on Susan Cardwell. The next committee will take them all as a whole, if it's okay. Gary Chet, reappointment to the audit committee. Dale Allen, reappointment to the audit committee. Building inspection board, appeals. Jim Carmichael, Ed Franklin, Tom Laken, Chuck Catlett. Conservation board, Jimmy Dell Patterson and Ben Hammer, these are reappointments. Long-range planning, Jim Snodgrass, Greg Byrd, Terry Dockery, Randy Bales, and Katie Huffaker. Already got a motion and a second. No requests to speak. All in favor of vote yes. Oppose, vote no. Passes twenty-one. Next are my oral appointments. Jefferson Memorial Hospital, Bill Newman. Nursing home board, Carolyn Bowles. Rachel Plan Commission Board of Zoning Appeals, Brian Morgan. This will be his first term. He was finishing out the term of, uh, Bobby Collins. Motion, second. Mr. Bales.
I don't know if the board is appropriate to build that board there. Mr. Collins, what was his name? Bobby?
Bob Collins. He passed away and you, Brian Morgan completed out his term. He has not served a complete term.
So, he's going back on the board that this time he'll go back and run?
Uh. Yeah, he was on the board, Solomon. Other requests to speak? All in favor of vote yes. Oppose, vote no.
That's it, a appeals board? It's not planning? Clarification, please.
Can you explain how the BZA comes out of, like, this is for planning commission, right?
BZA is the planning commission minus the two county commissioners.
Passes seventeen to four. That brings us to. Debt management policy four point three for approval from the finance director. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of vote yes. Oppose, vote no. That passes twenty-one, zero. Next is, uh, resolution twenty, twenty-three dash thirty-nine for approval with rules were suspended. Rules were suspended and this were at, this was added. It's a TCRS discontinued probationary period. Have motion and a second. Seeing no requests to speak, all in favor of vote yes. Oppose, vote no. Passes twenty, oh, zero. Next is budget amendments, county for approval. And I've added I as a, probably a fund amendment for Mr. Scarlett's motion. Later, we'll, we'll do it at the end of the county budget amendments. So, first one is fund one oh one, budget amendment one, items one through five. Needs no motion or second, coming from the budget committee. No discussion. All in favor of vote yes. Oppose, vote no.
I need a second.
It's coming from committee, doesn't need seconds. Or a motion.
Are you up in the bed?
I'm there. Twenty-one, zero. Next one is budget, funds one oh one, budget amendment two, item one, coming from the budget committee, needs no motion or second. All in favor of vote yes. Oppose, vote no. Passes twenty-one, zero. Fund one oh one, budget amendment three, items one and two. All in favor of vote yes. Oppose, vote no. Passes twenty-one, zero. Fund one oh one, budget amendment four, item one. All in favor of vote yes. Oppose, vote no. All in favor of both yes, opposed vote no. Fund one-fourteen, budget amendment one, item one. All in favor of both yes, opposed no. Passes twenty-one. Fund one-twenty-one, budget amendment one, item one. All in favor of both yes, opposed no. Passes. Fund one-twenty-seven, budget amendment number one, items one and two. Passes twenty-one. Fund, excuse me, fund one-eighty-nine, budget amendment one, item one. In favor of both yes, opposed both no. Passes twenty-one zero. At this time, Mr. Scarlett, you added to the agenda an item for the sheriff's department.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, the sheriff's department is going to have overtime, so you, combination, uh, on the burden of call there, in combination of flex time and comp time, you have a significant liability on comp time. We can at this point time, uh, Ms. Jesse, because of some of the funds, we have some money that we could put into a comp, I mean, a overtime line without affecting the maintenance of effort of the sheriff's department, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, one of the budget amendments that you just passed was going to increase fund balance due to the SRO grant. The total is three hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents. So technically, we cannot move those funds to fund balance, so my recommendation, he has a maintenance benefit, the sheriff's department does, so we can't reduce his salary lines since he is receiving a grant to pay for the SROs. So with those funds, my recommendation was you could move some of those funds to the overtime salary line, um, if you, if you wish, or maybe use the other lines for him. Now, just keep in mind, if that SRO does ever dissolve, nothing's guaranteed forever, so then, we would, if we did disperse those among salaries, then we would have to increase his salary line that amount, probably more at that point.
So, um, is sheriff still here?
He's out here. He's guarding Mike.
So, um, the confusing thing that a lot of people don't understand, I think, on the deputy's schedules is they work a, a hundred and sixty-eight hour, twenty-eight day cycle, which would be your, your straight time. Anything over a hundred and seventy-one hours in a twenty-eight day period has to be paid in at time and a half, kind of the same as if you're on a forty-hour work week and you work over forty hours, federal law says you have to receive time and a half compensation. So sheriff's department has been doing what's called flex time, where there's no time and a half there, they're just trading hours for hours, you take a day off if you've got this or that, and it's, this would create, um, a lot of shifts that are maybe short because they're taking flex time, time out. It would help retain deputies, keep shifts full, and I, I don't know, my brain's kind of fried right now after a little bit, but, um, maybe you can elaborate some more on it, Sheriff.
Well, it's going to give us an opportunity to, like when he was talking about the flex time, I mean, if you get into a busy period like we have the last two or three weeks, I mean, I've got some detectives that's acquired about twenty-five or thirty hours just in the, in the last few weeks of flex time. So, I mean, we've got all those detectives, but it's still, you know, the world keeps turning. You've got a, they're trying to flex that time off, and this way, if we have this overtime, we're able to compensate them and not worry about the flex time. And, I mean, it makes a big difference, especially when you're, the deputies are out on the street as well, because if they, if they go into court, they're in court for four hours, and they come back, I mean, supervisors try to encourage them to flex that time off sometime in that shift if it's quiet, and we're able to manage it that way, but we're not always able to manage that way, because we're still short about three or four positions right now. We've got a couple in the academy, but I mean, some of the shifts are just one or two short.
I spoke with Sheriff Coffey the other day on this issue, and one of the things that he brought up was that this will allow him, as he said, those ones that come back from court, he can, somebody's there, he can ask somebody to stay an hour or two longer on one or two, it gives him more flexibility with his health, it gives him a, a larger labor pool to draw from, and the sheriff said he would like to have at least a hundred thousand dollars placed in that line to start it. I talked to Ms. Jesse, she said if we put that in out of this and put that on there, we can, it would give us a baseline for next year's budget to where we could have a good look at what it's going to be and how to look at it. So what is your recommendation? Are you wanting to park all the money there, Ms. Jesse, or are you just...
I think the safest way, so we don't reduce his maintenance benefit, is to move those funds, but it would be less than twenty, around twenty percent. We would have to disperse about twenty percent to social security, Medicare, unemployment, retirement, but the, those funds, instead of increasing fund balance, moving those funds to the overtime line. That would give us time to learn more about the SRO grant at that point, we haven't increased anyone's salary with those funds at that point, um, I think that would be the safest until, I, I can't find a whole lot of information on the new SRO grant just yet, and I'm not that percent comfortable with it, so this would move those funds to his overtime line, but it would be a safe spot for them for right now, at least until October's meeting.
All right, so I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
On Ms. Jesse's recommendation to move the funds, whatever number that works out to be, to move the funds to the sheriff and allow him to go into paying, to use it for overtime. I also, because of this thing where the comp time liability, when we get to the rollover number, I'd like for us to look at buying down that liability with our rollover, with some of our rollover money when we get there, and with the sheriff's input, Ms. Jesse's input, and some folks like Mr. Paul, I don't know what that number is, but we needed to have the discussion whether we're going to have, whether we're going to have comp time anymore, whether we're going to have a cap on it, how much we're going to buy out, and so I'd like to send that through the proper channels, and if we have to change anything in the handbook, it needs to go through those committees. So I'd like to put that, move that off to October meeting, I'd like to work, have us work, you all working on it together, but move that to October meeting, but I would like to put the funds in the overtime line so that the sheriff can be helped out and draw on them to help his labor position. And that's my motion.
You got a motion and a second, so your motion is to set those funds aside for overtime, and then by the October meeting, we follow all administrative policy and rules that we have to do to make this right.
Yes, yes, sir, and the, the number would be the number of the SRO less the money that we have to take out for the social security and all that other stuff that we have to pay out of that line, and we're going to park it there, and the sheriff thinks that a hundred thousand dollars will work, but we're just going to park the rest of the funds there so we don't change his maintenance of effort.
So we have a motion and a second, so any discussion. All in favor of both yes, opposed vote no. Passes nineteen zero two in stane. Without objection, I'd like to combine all school amendments tonight, one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three, and one seventy-seven, as one motion. And second, because it comes from the budget committee, without objection, we will consider all four of these amendments. All in favor of both yes, opposed vote no. Passes twenty-one zero. That brings us to resolution twenty, twenty-three dash thirty-eight, Jefferson County Con resolution, landfill two point two million for approval. That also comes from the budget committee. No discussion. All in favor of both yes, opposed vote no. Twenty-one clear. Suspended wire, please. So all right, so when we move down to new business, unless I've skipped over some, uh, resolution one, we proved we beat it to death, so we're down to surplus resolutions.
Will we take all of them?
I was just going, I read your mind there, I was going to do that, so. Resolution thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven, all being combined in one motion. I have a motion, please. Okay, yeah.
Two more.
Yeah, let us combine them all. So, all in favor, I need a motion, though. A motion second, all right, all right. All in favor of both yes, opposed vote no. Passes twenty-one zero. Next item, Austin Brooks handed out to add rule three, part A, decorum, Commissioner Shuff speaking through the microphone when addressing the chairman, commissioners, and citizens. This will take, be a real change, it'll take fourteen votes to make this back.
I just wanted to add, Mr. Chairman, this is going to rule number three, part A, which is properly named decorum, and I think our citizens would appreciate it, just speaking into the microphone so they can hear, and I'm sure Mr. Bolton appreciates when we speak into the microphone so he can get that recording.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Scarlett, what hap, what's the penalty if you don't? I mean, is it the same one if you don't stand up to the commission regular, or what's the... That you won't turn mine on, so. It's simply a rule of decorum for the body. We get several complaints of people who can't hear, people, some, well, our meetings are recorded and sometimes they can't be heard.
I'm just going to say I'm not going to support this, and I do need to talk into the microphone, and I've been trying really hard since it's been brought up, but what if the microphones don't even work? What are we going to do that night? But, anyway.
Let's vote. All in favor of both yes, opposed vote no, this takes fourteen votes, please. Yes. It fails. It fails twelve in nine. Next item, there are no X in that house. Thank God.